Behind Kelly, please put your name down on it. We'll go in the listing of the names for the speaking engagements. First thing up on our agenda is minutes of the November 25th, 2013 meeting. Have a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Two seconds.
Thank you, Eileen. Any discussion on them?
It's good.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up on our agenda is the public hearing of the Park Point New Paltz Housing Project. Have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Peter, the second.
The second.
Thank you, Eileen. All those in favor?
Go ahead.
Public hearing on Park Point Housing. This is on a final environmental impact statement. This is the board's document of looking at the issues associated with the project and its recommendations as far as the environmental impact of the project. There are new information that was not available on the draft environmental impact statement. Those areas included soils, pesticide impacts, soil remediation actions, groundwater, Section E groundwater proposed water supply, and Section K community services fiscal impacts, and the pilot. We've asked, we've opened up a public hearing. First meeting was in November for to solicit public comment on areas that, for the information that wasn't available at the time of the draft environmental impact statement. I'll ask you to state your name and where you live. We'll go through the document in order. We have a podium up there on the side. We ask you to use that. Hopefully, the microphone's working and everybody will hear what you're saying. And also ask the community to refrain from applause, booing, cheering, et cetera like that. Everybody has a right to speak and a right to be heard regardless of what their opinion is. I will hold you down to about five minutes. If I raise my hand, you've got about a minute left on it. And in order to get everybody on board, we will need to stick to that kind of schedule on it. And again, if you haven't signed up and want to speak, please fill out the form on the desk behind Kelly. Sue Zemmit?
Probably will pass. Yeah, thanks, Sue. I appreciate that.
Microphone is on now?
Yep.
Okay. Well, he did say that I had to speak for five minutes, but I got permission from him to run. But since I represent five people, the Town Board of New Paltz, I basically have about 25 minutes. But I won't take that long. But it will be more than five minutes because this is a document put together on behalf of the Town Board, with the Town Board all together on this. And so it's a little bit long, but it's thorough, and it's pretty necessary to get this into the record. So as the supervisor on behalf of the Town Board, welcome everybody tonight. I submit the following comments on behalf of the Town Board of the Town of New Paltz. The Town Board appreciates the diligent and comprehensive environment review that the planning board, as seeker lead agency, has undertaken with respect to the proposed Park Point New Paltz project. In particular, we appreciate the opportunity that the planning board has afforded the public and involved agencies to comment on the FEIS as that document includes reports and analysis that address issues raised by the public during review of the draft environmental impact statement. It is clear that the foremost issue raised by the public with respect to this application is not the project itself or the importance to SUNY New Paltz, but the applicant's need for a proposed pilot agreement. For the reasons below, the Town Board does not believe that the requested pilot is necessary for this project. Further, the Town Board finds no evidence in the record that the applicant has demonstrated that the pilot will accomplish the objectives set out in the mission statement of the Ulster County Industrial Development Agency in any meaningful respect, and certainly not to the extent that would justify the extraordinary relief from property taxes that the pilot would provide. The Town Board is mindful that the seeker does not alter the jurisdiction of agencies. Thus, the Town Board is aware that the responsibility for determining whether the Park Point project receives a pilot remains with the IDA. However, the Town Board is also aware that the IDA has firmly declared that any applicant for a pilot must demonstrate that the proposed action meets the objectives set out in the agency's mission statement, which is increased or retained employment, economic vitality, creation and attraction of new businesses, retention of existing businesses, and new opportunities for the local economy. When an applicant seeks relief on the scale proposed by Wilmerite, a reduction of approximately 90 percent of the taxes that would otherwise go to the town, the school district, and the county over a 25-year term of a dormitory pilot, the board trusts that the IDA will demand clear and objective proof that those objectives will be met in substantial respect and refuse a pilot to a project that does not bring commensurate value. The Town Board appreciates that the FEIS provides an opportunity to review a third-party expert's assessment of the fiscal benefits and the fiscal impacts of the project. What seems clear is that the project does not significantly increase permanent employment opportunities for Ulster County residents on a scale that warrants the proposed pilot. It appears that the project itself will create fewer than 10 permanent jobs, while the secondary employment that may result is uncertain and may simply transfer employment opportunity within the county. The board remains concerned that so far the applicant has failed to make a convincing "but for" argument that supports its pilot request. While SUNY New Paltz may indeed benefit from the ability to offer more diverse range of housing opportunities, the for-profit developer of Park Point project does not explain how it contained a reasonable return on its investment but for a pilot, leaving it for board to conclude that whatever benefit the project brings to SUNY New Paltz, it can also do so without a pilot that deprives the town and other taxing jurisdictions of property tax revenues. Absence any compelling demonstration that the project cannot proceed but for the requested incentive, we believe that the pilot cannot be granted, in which case there would be no adverse fiscal impact on the community services that the project will require. Moreover, in the absence of a pilot, the project will compete with existing rental unit owners for tenants on equal terms. Given the high rental rates for existing student housing in New Paltz, it appears that the Park Point project should be financially viable without IDA incentives. It certainly is unlikely that the project would relocate outside the immediate vicinity of the college campus. Therefore, when the applicant comes before the IDA for action, the Town Board anticipates that the IDA will carefully review the records of the public hearings before the planning board and the fiscal analysis provided in the EIS. Should the IDA still believe that financial incentives may be necessary before the IDA takes any action on the pilot, the Town Board anticipates and will demand pro forma from the applicant that demonstrates the basis for the need and that it will provide a clear explanation as to what facts and circumstances warrant granting a pilot to this applicant. As noted in the fiscal impact analysis reviewed conducted by Planning Board's consultant, CGR, the project will significantly increase the town's college-age resident population. The town is well aware that this segment of the population creates significant impacts on police, fire, and emergency services, as evidenced by the late-night calls for police services in the downtown area of the village. While the consultant's analysis of the cost emerges from the report provided by the Police Commission, it seems clear that the cost of serving the increased student population will likely exceed $300,000 per year. If the assumptions used by the applicant and CGR remain accurate over time, for example, this analysis relies upon a three-year-old contract that does not include increased medical benefits, retirement, and increased salaries, so the Town Board believes it's even greater than $300,000 because of those factors that haven't been included. Without a pilot, the assessors estimate of tax review for the tax revenues from the project indicate the taxes paid to the town, and I'm only talking about town taxes because as a town supervisor and Town Board, we can only talk about the impact on us because we're in an independent jurisdiction. Without a pilot, the assessors estimate of tax revenues from the project indicates that the taxes paid to the town would be approximately $370,000. The result is if the project paid taxes, it might at least pay for the direct cost of services and perhaps provide revenue to pay much of the cost of the sundry indirect services provided by the town to all residents, including the future residents of Park Point. If a pilot is granted, even at the highest rate of payment provided by the dormitory project payment schedule, the town will suffer a significant adverse impact. Not only is that overall pilot inadequate to reimburse the town for the actual cost of services required by the project, but is allocated among the taxing jurisdictions absent consent of the taxing jurisdictions otherwise in accordance with their share of property tax revenues, not in proportion to the costs incurred by those jurisdictions. Unfortunately, when the IDA undertook to adopt its dormitory policy, it canceled the scheduled invitation for the chief executive offices to provide comments on proposed amendments. The Town Board was never provided with notice of the rescheduled meeting. That oversight was especially unfortunate since the town and village holds the only four-year college in the county and the only institution of higher education in the county with dormitory facilities. Had the town had the opportunity to review the pilot payment schedule for the dormitory project when it was proposed by the IDA, we would have demonstrated the inadequacy of the payment schedule to even cover the cost of community services. The pilot payment for dormitory housing that has been fixed by the IDA, and it was arranged that amount goes from $450 to $750 based on fault, the number of units. The definition of a unit still requires clarification. Some of us think it's bedrooms. Some people think it's number of apartments or kitchens. The town believes the appropriate definition would be based on the economic units offered for lease, meaning individual bedrooms versus apartments. So based on the calculation for units using the highest end, which is the $750, not the $400, at 238 apartments, the pilot payment would be $178,500, and the town's share would be $43,000. If the calculation was based on beds, using the high-end rate, $750, times 632 beds, the pilot payment would result in $474,000, and the town would receive only $114,000. So under both scenarios, whether they define bed or apartment, the town does not get enough money to cover our costs, and the taxpayers sitting in this room will have to pick it up. Clearly, this formula and payment schedule is wholly inadequate in making the town of New Paltz whole. So issue number one, in the event that the IDA finds that the applicant has met its burden of proof, to avoid the potential adverse fiscal impacts of the project on the taxing jurisdictions, including the town of New Paltz, the IDA must fashion a pilot that takes into consideration the actual cost of the community services that will be required to serve the residents of the project and provide sufficient revenue to make the town whole, as well as other taxing jurisdictions that may be impacted by this project. The IDA should adjust the pilot schedule of payments to require that the applicant pay the full cost of services provided by the town and other tariffs and jurisdictions so that each jurisdiction is made whole. Mitigation. Consequently, mitigation of the fiscal impacts of the project will require that any pilot granted by the IDA be structured to make the town whole for the actual cost of the services it will provide to the residents of the project, as they join the resident population of the town and the community. The IDA should state the assumption it relied upon in granting any pilot and annually adjust the allocation of the pilot payment to ensure that each taxing jurisdiction will at least be made whole for the reasonably related cost it incurs in providing services to the residents of the project, including off-site impacts associated with the increase in student age residents of the town and village. Issue number two, further as adopted by the IDA, the dormitory project pilot schedule only increases with general cost of inflation. As indicated by the EIS, the cost of police, fire, and emergency service are driven in significant respect by factors that are, as the Town Board is well aware from its budget process, inadequately represented by the general cost of living indexes. Over the term of the pilot, the current cost of municipal service will likely be subject to numerous variations from factors as diverse as municipal collective bargaining agreement, implementation of the Affordable Health Care Act, the imposition of federal and state mandates on police, fire, and emergency services, and factors that differentially affect services to college-age populations that would reside in, really residing in this project. Mitigation. Therefore, mitigation of the fiscal impacts of the project over the 25-year term of the dormitory project pilot requires that the payment be indexed to the current cost of principal municipal services required by the project, so that any future increase in costs paid by the town residents will also be shared by the project owners. Issue number three, as indicated in the EIS, the applicant has represented that in the long term, the project will be beneficial to the town because the project will pay property taxes and the full assessed value of the project if the conclusion of the pilot for the full 46-year term of the lease. Mitigation. That representation should be set forth as consideration for any pilot that may be granted, and a declaration to that effect acknowledged by the applicant and the property owner should be recorded in the county clerk's office. Issue number four, the applicant has represented that the project will have beneficial fiscal impacts on New Paltz because of project residents, because project residents will move from areas outside of New Paltz, with the result that there will be increased spending in the town and village, and that in turn will increase secondary employment. The applicants in the college have both represented that the project will not result in increased enrollment SUNY New Paltz, and instead that students residing outside the area and commuting will move to this housing provided by this project. Mitigation. Those representations set forth as consideration for any pilot that may be granted, and the college and the applicant should be tried to market units first to students residing outside of the New Paltz area, second to new or transfer students that currently residing in the village or the town, and provide preferential opportunities for those students to lease units at Park Point. Only next should the project be made available to existing students living in the village or the town. Issue number five, the Town Board anticipates that the planning board will require the applicant, the foundation, and the college should enter into court a developer's agreement with the town as appropriate to implement the mitigation measures identified in the FEIS as those measures are made conditions of approval. And finally, the board may, upon review of the public hearing record, submit additional comments on the FEIS prior to the close of the comment period. On behalf of the Town Board, I do wish to take this opportunity to extend our appreciation to the members of the planning board for their effort to ensure that this project receives a complete, careful, and impartial review. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. I'll give certain leeway to the town supervisor, but let's refrain from that because it goes both ways. Again, I remind you with a time limit on it. Ruth Quinn? Susan, you're going to submit your comments.
Yes, actually, I have them.
Too hard.
Do you want to all let it go or not?
Go ahead, Ruth.
Hi there. I'm Ruth Quinn. I'm vice president of the New Paltz Central School District's Board of Ed, and I'm also chair of the district's Legislative Action Committee. I'm here in an official capacity to represent the Board of Ed by reading a position statement about pilots that was created at our last Board of Ed meeting on December 4th. The New Paltz Central School District has had to deal with the decline in federal and state aid over the last several years, shifting the burden of education funding to our local taxpayers. As a result, the board has had to make cuts to our programs and to our operations. At the same time, the New York State Property Tax Levy Limit Law has limited the amount of money that can be leveraged from property owners, while unfunded mandates have required that we continue to incur significant financial expenses. Voting on the school budget has become significantly more important under the tax cap legislation. With no increase in state aid, options include voter override or continued cutting of staff and programs. The New Paltz Central School District is the only interested taxing authority that needs referendum approval to levy taxes. We recognize that our community is lucky to have a vibrant nonprofit sector that includes the State University of New York, as well as open spaces and farms. Our area is a desirable place to live. However, taxpayers are struggling because of the reduced tax base. It is in this general framework that the Board of Education asks the question, how do pilots impact school districts during the tax cap? In order to inform ourselves, we have done research to become familiar with the math involved with setting a tax levy and how pilots factor into that number. We also looked at reports specifically about pilots, especially the Camoyne Associates Report, as well as historical data for Woodland Club, Haverley, and Viking Industry pilot agreements that were gathered through the New Paltz Clerk's Office and our own district business offices. According to the New York State Education Department's website, pilots can have a negative impact on the tax levy formula. There's no floor to the tax levy limit, which means it's possible to create a tax limit that is less than 0 percent, especially in districts with new pilots. A pilot reduces a crucial multiplier used in the allowable tax cap formula, and then payments are added to and subtracted from the tax levy. In addition, when it is a new project, there's no previous year payment added to the formula, only a subtraction of anticipated payments. As part of the levy formula, the true value of the pilot project is not included in the growth factor and negatively impacts the tax formula by lowering it. The school district does not have the ability to exceed the tax cap without a supermajority vote. The Board of Education can't avoid the fact that it is now between a rock and a hard place, wanting to support local economic development, but at the same time needing to be mindful of the impact that pilot agreements have on the tax levy limit law formula, as well as on the community that reports us through their taxes. The board is concerned by the complex interaction between the New York State Tax Cap Law and pilot agreements. Further, the Board of Education is now prepared to take a position concerning the impacts of pilots on our district budget and will now prepare a resolution for our December 18th Board of Ed meeting. We recognize that our responsibility is to the district budget and the taxpayers in the community, and not to a specific corporation or project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Dan?
Hi, Daniel Torres, Town of New Paltz. I'd like to start by thanking the members of our planning board. All of them who served give up their free time to volunteer for our community, and they should be committed for their commitment to the Town of New Paltz. Over the last few months, I've spoken to hundreds of residents in our community about issues that they care about the most. The Park Point project is one that came up frequently and invoked the most emotion. However, tonight, I'm not speaking as someone just elected to the Town Council, but rather someone who has grown up in New Paltz and wants to make sure that this is a community that myself and future families can start a family. I have a number of concerns about this project. To start, I'm displeased that the FEIS states that LEED and NGBS are similar. The NGBS relies more on energy modeling than site verification, which I believe is a large difference. It's important to note that Executive Order 111 requires that all buildings constructed on public property in New York State must meet the LEED Silver Standard. The current Park Point proposal states that the project will be constructed only to the National Green Building Standard Bronze Level. Although this is not public land, I still feel that this project for a state university should hold that standard that New York State does. I understand and sympathize with SUNY New Paltz's need for additional housing. However, I believe it is essential for the continued success of any community that all of those within the community pay their fair share. We're not talking about churches or the Mohawk Preserve. We're talking about a for-profit company that is asking to have millions of dollars in profits subsidized by the taxpayers of New Paltz. I also reject the notion that this does not affect the school district because no school-age children will live there. If we accept that, then any individual who does not have a child in the school district should be exempt from paying their school taxes. We value the importance of education, and I would argue that New Paltz does more than the average small town. We ask all to contribute to our schools because we believe that it's an important service for our community, even if not everyone utilizes that service. We believe that you do this to invest in the future of our community as a part of the underlying social contract. In closing, the planning board has no say in the tax-free status of this project, or a pilot, I should say, but they do have the important role of protecting the community from projects that could harm it, and I believe that there is more than sufficient evidence that suggests that this could be one of those projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
He's not in the official general, correct? He's just a resident right now.
Go ahead, March.
My name is March Gallagher. I'm a resident of the Town of Rosendale, and I'm here on behalf of Hudson Valley Pattern for Progress, and I'm going to read a statement on behalf of that organization. Hudson Valley Pattern for Progress is pleased to submit testimony in support of the Park Point Dormitory Project to assist in meeting demand for student housing at SUNY New Paltz. Pattern knows something about the construction of good housing. We operate a center dedicated to finding housing solutions throughout the Hudson Valley. We've had the opportunity to review dozens of projects, conduct many significant research studies, and work with some of the leading experts in the field of housing. This has led us to testify on behalf of a select number of projects, and we are well aware of the variety of important arguments that can be posed against adding housing to a community. In this context, Pattern seldom has a chance where it can lend its voice to support housing that benefits both the improvement of educational opportunity and a local community's economy. We think this project provides a multitude of benefits, and therefore, we endorse the project. While we are cognizant of the potential impacts on the town and village of New Paltz, we believe they are offset by the commensurate benefits, as well as the equally important need to recognize the regional significance of SUNY New Paltz to aid business throughout the Hudson Valley. SUNY New Paltz has worked hard for the past decade to gain a richly deserved reputation for providing quality education, not only to local students, but for those living regionally and beyond. In this context, its importance to the region cannot be understated. Article after article have stated how New Paltz has emerged not just as a good state school, but as a fine academic institution, public or private. Pattern, as a regional planning and policy organization that seeks to improve the quality of life throughout the Hudson Valley, recognizes that the region's lack of a major academic research facility has at times hurt our region's economic vitality. As SUNY New Paltz's stature grows, its benefit to the region cannot be underestimated. Therefore, it is critical to ensure that all of the elements that help the college attract quality students continue. We do not wish to take the time of this board to belabor the arguments that have already been presented on behalf of Park Point. We fully support the analysis that suggests the college lacks sufficient student housing as compared to other SUNY campuses, and that good housing that is affordable is needed to ensure the continued attraction of high-quality students to New Paltz. Throughout the United States, colleges and universities must have the ability to offer student housing that can meet this demand as the competition for students increases. Given the extremely low vacancy rate, combined with the large commuting student population, the market here can accommodate Park Point in addition to the existing stock. According to recent study by Pattern's Center for Housing Solutions, 65 percent of Ulster County residents are unable to afford a two-bedroom rental at fair market rent. Furthermore, an analysis of the comprehensive housing affordability strategy data released by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development shows that the village of New Paltz, more than 80 percent of the renters at or below the household area median family income are living in what is classified as severely cost-burdened housing, and that is housing that costs more than 50 percent of household income. Hence, New Paltz has a very large need for affordable housing. Having a private developer will mean the reduction in both the cost and bureaucracy to the state. With the addition of Park Point, some affordable housing units now occupied by students may become available to those in need. Those who prefer the reduction in size and scope of state government should be pleased that private developers are stepping up to undertake these projects. Community colleges throughout the Hudson Valley and other private colleges throughout New York State are examples of how the private sector can and does this kind of housing more efficiently. Yet here, the developer has stated that to solidify the financial viability of the project, a pilot is a necessary tool for success. Right now, the property provides virtually no tax revenue to the taxing jurisdictions. If the project does not go forward, SUNY New Paltz is unlikely to see a major dorm housing project approved, financed, and constructed within the next 10 years. We therefore fully support approval of the project to enable the addition of affordable quality student housing, which we believe will be to the benefit of additional commerce for the local community, as well as the continued building of a high-quality regional institution for the benefit of all of the Hudson Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, March.
I'm going to submit both my testimony as well as the statistics and reports that I cited.
I appreciate it. And again, if you do have written comments, please get them to Kelly. Ira?
Yes.
You have five minutes.
My name is Ira Margolis. I live in the village of New Paltz. A couple of points I wanted to bring out, and I didn't have a chance to, because I probably didn't have it. I love the sort of doublespeak you get from the College of Wilmerite. They talk about affordable housing, not affordable housing for the residents, affordable housing for students at residence expense. They talk about increase in the economic base. They also know that the economic base that they're talking about are the businesses in the downtown business area, which if you look at the assessment rolls, usually pay a lot less than the individual homeowner. So they'll get another $100,000 in income for, let's say, a month. They'll still pay their $15,000, $16,000 worth of taxes. How does that benefit the residents? I live in the village of New Paltz. A couple of points I wanted to bring out, and I didn't have a chance to because the project is running. I love the sort of doublespeak you get from the College of Wilmerite. They talk about affordable housing, not affordable housing for the residents, affordable housing for students at residence expense. They talk about increase in the economic base. They also know that the economic base that they're talking about are the businesses in the downtown business area, which if you look at the assessment rolls, usually pay a lot less than the individual homeowner. So they'll get another hundred thousand dollars in income for, let's say, a month's fee, they'll still pay their fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars worth of taxes. How does that benefit the residents? They don't say residents, they say New Paltz, but they're not talking about the residents. This kind of project is only going to hurt the residents. It's going to make people have to leave their homes because they're not going to be able to afford the tax burden, and, you know, so fine, the students will have a nice cheap place to live, the residents won't have a nice cheap place to live, but they'll have to subsidize the students having a nice cheap place to live. You talk about the effect to the school board, all right? I spoke to the school board, and I'll give you my interpretation of the damaging effect that this will have on the school board. People's taxes are going to get raised so that the students can have subsidized housing. That's fine. People are going to have to make decisions. Do I pay my taxes? Do I cut back on my utilities? What do I do? I can't afford, do I leave my house? Well, what would be, I know what I would do if I was living here and I had an opportunity to vote down a budget that was going to take more of my money, I certainly would go in there and say, "Heck, school board, too bad. I can't afford it, you're going to have to do without." This is going to, this is going to affect the New Paltz children's quality of education. The college doesn't care about that. Their only concern, and rightly so, is about their students. You know, it's the same thing that Susan brought up, and it's a very good point. Park Point can charge anything they want for rent. So if they need a tax benefit or they need a pilot program in order to make profit, that's not quite true, because they've got a captive audience through the college. These students will be there, they will go into things, and you know what? If they have to go and go to mommy and daddy and ask for another ten dollars, let them do that. The people in this town, the residents who live here, the actual residents, shouldn't have to be forced out of their homes because of an increase that is not a fair reason. I can understand if they were a for-profit company, but they are, and they have, there's no control on rent, there is no rent control. They can charge whatever they want. The college is its own entity. I mean, you're listening to these people near, half the people are saying there's going to be new students, half the people say there is going to be new students. Solid says yes, college says no. How do we know what's going to be honest down the road? And the people that are going to be stuck here, once this project goes through, are going to be, one day wake up, those that are still able to stay, I know I'm not going to be one of them, maybe that's why I talk the way I am, because with my taxes going up, it's going to reach, I don't have affordable housing, it's just going to reach a point where it's sixty percent of my income, and that's just unrealistic that I should have to pay that so that students can have affordable housing when there's no affordable housing for people like me. That's wrong, and residents don't deserve to be, you know, taken advantage of like this for a for-profit corporation or the college. So my last statement is I'm going to make the same plea I made to you the last time. Nobody has the power to stop this in terms of taxes, I D A, or anything, but you people sitting on this planning board have the power to protect the residents of New Paltz. You can deny this building going forward and let the college make the big public think about how, well, they couldn't get their program approved and blah, 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 and how, let the public, let everybody in the state and the politicians all know that the college in New Paltz, by the way, one of the best party schools, I read the report in New York's, in the country, that's academic excellence by me, is forcing people out of their homes, particularly senior citizens and people on the front. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ira. Bob?
Actually, just a few things that I wanted to cover. First of all-
Wait, can you, can you state your name?
Bob Kilroy, New Paltz. First of all, I want to thank you for the layout. I don't know who's responsible for the questions and the answers and stuff for that, but that made it a whole lot easier than trying to go through the six hundred pages, so I want to thank everyone for that. Um, read through, I still have a couple of concerns in there, but I realize only time will bear out with regards to the stream water, how the water will impact the stream that runs along Cross Creek, but based on all the studies we're saying, it should actually be less, I guess. Um, and the effect on wells, nobody will know probably till after the effect. So that'll just kind of wait and see, but I do want to at least state my support for the fact that I'm in support of the project overall. I do not feel though that they should be getting any kind of a break as far as the pilot comes, basically because if they end up doing it, it has its precedents for some of the other apartment buildings, and I tend to believe that if we would have known this right in the very beginning, we probably could have found somebody besides Wilmerite that would have built it and basically accepted the fact that we blocked taxes. That's all I can say.
Thank you, Bob. Ethan Gar?
Hi there, I'm Ethan Gar from Southside Terrace Apartments here in New Paltz. My father, Andrew Gar, has asked me to read the letter that he wrote and submitted to the New Paltz Times recently. Winners and losers. There are rumblings suggesting that Wilmerite has its Park Point project pilot in the bag. Hopefully, that's just rumor, political maneuvering, background deals haven't given them a leg up on the little bit people. But if we assume the worst case, who will be the winners and losers in this project? Clearly, Wilmerite will be one of the winners. If they pull off the pilot, each dollar of tax savings based on that seven percent cap rate is worth fourteen dollars in value. My father's a real estate guy, I should let you know that. Should they save six hundred thousand dollars, which is less than what they're asking for, the value of Park Point would go up from full taxation by about eight million dollars. No wonder we've heard that they're threatening no pilot, no project, it's a lot of money. They're a very smart, well-prepared company with excellent legal counsel. It wouldn't be a surprise, be surprised to see a local government act in this fallen line for them. Of course, the university, at least in the university leadership's short side of thinking, yes, they get free dorms, but their problem with declining enrollment and reduced state aid will not be solved by a surplus of student housing. Despite what you've heard, there's already vacancy in student housing in New Paltz. Fancy dorms will attract a few students, but most SUNY students are looking to spend less. Park Point's impact on student housing is tough to analyze. Some students who can afford Park Point will move into this new facility, but their projects in Syracuse and Rochester command much higher rents than student housing currently in New Paltz, and I can tell you this for a fact, as I went and visited myself. What will happen if SUNY's dorms are not full? Certainly, the college would do something about reduced revenue. Perhaps sophomores will have to live on campus. Some students just might prefer to go elsewhere. Unfortunately, the list of losers is much more significant. The New Paltz School Board will be a big loser in this. It's hard to criticize a group of well-meaning citizens who work without compensation and get a large amount of grief, but they're about to make a terrible mistake because they're being asked, on top of all their other responsibilities, to make a complicated judgment about a very complex issue. I realize that you've made a new statement since you wrote this, bear with me. You know, we'll just skip that section, but I'll just simply say, clearly, if we have more teachers, you're going to need more teachers and more classrooms, and you're not going to have the revenue to provide for that. So, I agree with you. Losers. Owners of single-family homes and multifamily residents. Faced with the consequence of Wilmerite's tax break, these owners will have no choice but to cut their rents. This is a leveraged phenomenon. It may sound good, but if rents drop ten to fifteen percent, which they might, these owners will lose all of their profits. Their other expenses will remain the same even if rents are lower. And then what happens? Claims for reduced taxes will emerge with abandonment. The owners of other real estate will be forced to pick up the shortfall. Property values will go down. How much is anyone's guess? But the biggest loser are the people of New Paltz. No reality shows necessary here. The people of New Paltz are usually very sophisticated, alert to issues. Unfortunately, here they're not. They're faced with a well-organized and capable opposition which is working hard to see them and to believe in that this project has only positive consequences, even though the independent analysis suggests that most of their logic is flawed. The representatives of the people of New Paltz who are well-meaning and intelligent are being overwhelmed with opposition that is planned assault, leveraging very sharp people and a lot of powerful marketing tools. Our representatives are volunteers, most of them at least, so it may not be fair to expect them to see what they're up against or to be able to take it all in. It's unfortunate that good people must suffer when only a few are able to fight for them. We'll all lose if Wilmerite wins this fight for a pilot. If they want to compete in New Paltz, let their product and service do the talking, not an unfair tax advantage that robs you and your children of the future you deserve. And I just wanted to say, having been here and listened to some of the comments myself today, as I said, I personally have visited Syracuse and Rochester. I've seen the jobs it creates, seven or eight at each location, and I've seen what the project is about. I think it's funny that we're talking about this as affordable housing. All you have to do is call and ask them what their rents are. They're pretty high. Their units will be far more expensive than everything else here in New Paltz. And they constantly talk about extremely low vacancy rates here in New Paltz. Drive down Main Street. In fact, if you're so sure that there's vacancies, please, I'll give you the phone number to our office and you can come over and rent at Southside Terrace Apartments if we have the availability. So anyway, I wanted to say thank you for your time. I do know that this is a complicated process, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. John Johnson?
Hello, my name's John Johnson. I'm a resident of New Paltz. I'm prepared to pretty much say what most people have already said, so I'm going to cut to the chase and just point out to you folks that if Wilmerite receives this pilot, New Paltz will be giving away at least sixty million dollars over the course of the twenty-five years. Sixty million dollars. The I D A, who is not supposed to, not supposed to look at Wilmerite's application until after you guys close the public hearing, are under the assumption that you guys are closing it tonight, and you might very well do that. But my point is that if they're under the assumption that you're going to close it tonight and they're on the agenda for this coming Wednesday morning, this coming Wednesday morning, they're on the agenda, that tells me that they're pushing this through. The people that sit on the I D A, none of which are residents of New Paltz, so I would think that they don't have the stake in New Paltz and the sixty million dollars as much as everyone in this room does. And because of that, I asked this board to be bold and tell Wilmerite, if you guys decide to approve the project, which you may, tell Wilmerite that it's conditional on them paying a full taxation, full amount of taxation, and help the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Harry Ellis?
My name is Harry Ellis. I'm a thirty-three-year resident of the Town of New Paltz homeowner and taxpayer. The Park Point Wilmerite issue is one of great concern for the community and for the college. On the one hand, the college needs additional student housing. On the other hand, the community is being asked to foot the bill for additional police and fire protection, which the investors from Wilmerite provide what appears to be a questionable sum to appease the taxpayers of the town. Some of the town people are partially in favor of building the Park Point development as long as they subsidize the school taxes, while others are totally opposed to its construction, stating that it will increase the population of the town by five percent, causing major traffic and overcrowding issues. Student housing projects that Wilmerite built in Syracuse and Rochester most likely already had previously established municipal water and sewer. Homeowners in small cities in New York State that are depressed, have depressed real estate valuation like Syracuse and Rochester have subsidies for most of their educational budgets. New Paltz residents have none of these advantages and were asked to foot the bill for private investor for the next twenty, twenty years. In my lifetime, I've learned that change is inevitable. I have a, you have a choice to get out of the way because you're likely to get run over or become part of the process of change in a guided, destructive manner. I'd hate to see a long, drawn-out legal battle between the town, the college, and Wilmerite, one in which only the lawyers win. We need to look for solutions that are likely to benefit all parties. We need to look, think outside the box, and I believe that occasionally there comes a defining moment that begs for a solution and requires the parties in conflict to come to a mutual agreement. At the last meeting, David Lent expressed concerns about traffic congestion, overpopulation, overpopulated buildings, and parking issues. He then went on to express concern for the sewage treatment plant and wells in close proximity to the, excuse me, he went on to express concern about sewage treatment plant and well in close proximity to that sewage treatment plant. I am concerned with that particular issue for potential pollution and destruction of the aquifer, an issue that could haunt us residents of the town for a long time. Based on the location and proximity to the village, along with wetlands and poor soil conditions, I can see potential time bomb for the wetland and well contamination. Looking over the topographical map provided by the Park Point developers, I see that parcel land sits close in elevation range between three hundred and forty feet and two hundred and eighty feet, a slope of sixty feet from east to west, down towards the river and the village. That is significant pitch to the land, and the Walco River has an elevation of approximately one hundred and eighty feet along the village riverbank. Placing the sewage treatment plant at such a high elevation in that location is asking for trouble. If there is ever a sewage spill, wells in the town will suffer serious pollution and ripper damage. The aquifer in the village will suffer similar harm. This issue may not arise the next year or decade, but it's possibly an issue of the future. Wilmerite may be long gone, but they will have left their mark on our soil. Here lies that when you get lemons, you make one an aid moment. Now is the time for the infrastructure of the Town of New Paltz to join the twenty-first century. It's time to resolve issues that are likely to stymie the growth and possibly the health of our town for years to come. I think that the planning board should tell the Park Point developers to move the location of the sewage treatment plant to a location that is outside the proposed Park Point property, to a location controlled by the town. One alternative might be to hook up the town to the village municipals, but that's likely to be too expensive and require them to expand their already overextended facilities. Another might be to request that they, Park Point, build a sludge treatment plant away from the potentially polluted area and perhaps over behind the high school to a location of lower elevation and sloping away from the village. Exact location I leave to the civil engineers. Municipal sewage treatment and water discharges are sadly lacking in the Town of New Paltz and need to be upgraded. Our town is surrounded by wetlands and floodplains, both a blessing and a curse. We need additional thinking outside the box for solutions. Why not use the wetlands to our advantage by creating reed bed ponds to remove the nitrates and liquid, liquid waste and create potentially expandable sludge waste treatment away from the college and village in an area earmarked for unusable for building due to wetland contaminations? You may ask yourself, are reed bed ponds a viable solution in our climate and location? Yes, it is currently being used by Zumetel Lighting Company at the location of Road Two Ninety-Nine and Nine W. Perhaps you could visit their facility, that might enlighten you on to the possibilities. The Town of New Paltz is fragmented. By that I mean that the town surrounds the village and has hills and valleys difficult to pipe sewage as well as the thruway and Walco River. It needs to be some creative thinking to upgrade the infrastructure and prepare for growth in the future. I had heard that the town had issues in the North Ohioville Treatment Plant, the other side of the thruway. It's surrounded by wetlands. Create a sewer district in the east side of the thruway, have reed bed ponds and holding tanks for the sludge. There may also be issues of leach fields, failures on Anne Street. Why not build sewer line down the length of Anne and Hummel and Rocket Hill and other developments? Have the effluent pass through a holding tank and hold the liquid to flow into reed bed ponds somewhere near the wetlands along the Walco River. The sludge could be trucked to the new treatment plant, and if the town adopts the use of reed bed filtration and has holding tanks for the sludge in various sewer districts, I believe that we can move into the future with confidence that we can accommodate growth and at the same time maintain a healthy environment. that we can accommodate growth and at the same time maintain a healthy environment. With the expansion of municipals comes the increased value potential on the commercial and residential properties. Perhaps a sewer line could run down a length of southwheek corners, enhancing the prospects of light industrial development along the road. Eventually, the high school could be connected to the same municipal sewer line. Instructing these facilities is not going to be cheap. If we plan for the future by building our municipal water, sewer, and gas lines, good room for them to expand as the population increases, it will make it less expensive in the long run. Developers or residential subdivisions might also be interested in the use of reed bed sewage treatment as a way to reduce health department requirements for expensive above-ground leach fields when designing their new housing projects. Asking Wilmerite to shoulder some or all of the responsibility is not uncored, considering the potential for their serious contamination and lawsuits. Besides, they're already building a sewage treatment plant. Why not expand it so we can all use it? Support for the community projects by developers is not unusual. Isn't that the method that we use to acquire the financing for the community center behind us? I hope that you will take my suggestions as a consideration. I realize that you have some difficult and important decisions to make.
Thank you, Harry. Josh?
Well, it's been a long time since I've appeared before the board, although back then I was here a lot. I'm Josh Honig of Newport. I did take out some of the stuff in that's redundant, other stuff I chose to leave for effect. So, before I start, I just want to say that if Park Point pays their fair share of taxes, that I and many others who have expressed concerns would not have a problem with the project as it will benefit SUNY, which is an important part of our community. Those of us who live here are already experiencing the effect of having so many properties off the tax rolls. About 65 percent of village properties are off the tax rolls. To give Wilmerite the pilot they are seeking would be an unfair additional tax burden on Newport. There will be increased traffic as students already drive to town from the campus, and the new facility will be just a little further from town. This will bring more parking problems in the downtown area. As more students live in this project, it will create more vacancies and lower rents in the village and town. And eventually, landlords might find it to be not profitable to be in business and will sell off properties, thereby lowering real estate values. Families will fill the void, which I think would be good to have families, but they will most likely add children to our schools, thereby creating a greater impact on our school system. The faculty and staff units at Park Point might also add a few more students. As it is, the Newport schools will soon need more revenue for repairing the Newport schools' infrastructure. A school bond was not approved a few years ago, but we are going to have to fix up what we have, and that's probably going to be 40 to 80 million dollars. So we just can't afford the millions that we would subsidize to the Park Point project and still take care of our own community. Wilmerite claims that minimal impacts are anticipated. Let's look at our school system. The other businesses and corporations in town pay their fair share of taxes, whether the owners live in Newport or have school-aged children. A lot of those businesses go beyond paying their taxes. They also give discounts to students and seniors, as well as support many other community events, such as fireworks, athletics, family of Newport, regatta, et cetera. A company like Wilmerite will send their profits back to Rochester. I, along with many other taxpayers in town, don't have children in the school system, and we all pay our taxes. For me, it's about 400 a month after the start, but we do it because we all have to support our community to keep it viable. If the no-impact standard that Wilmerite wants applied here were so, there would be a lot less revenue coming in, we wouldn't have a school system and many other services that make this community a great place to live in. What I've mentioned so far should be compelling enough to guide you to a conclusion that a tax pilot for Park Point is totally and completely unacceptable to our community from a fiscal point of view. However, in case a few more bits of information are needed to persuade you, I offer you the following. And this is about Wilmerite in terms of the company we're dealing with. Wilmerite owed $22 million in back taxes and fees to the city of Rochester for about 20 years, resulting from a loan and tax agreement surrounding the failed development of the Sibley Building in downtown Rochester. They set up a company called Rockwell Limited Partnership Subsidiary Wilmerite to limit the liability if something should go wrong. They weren't able to rewrite a lease to the building in the downtown, and they stopped making the loan payments in 1998. They also stopped paying their pilot agreement. Because Rockwell was a limited liability company, Rochester couldn't get the money it was owed. The city never foreclosed on the building because it would add to the taxpayer expense of keeping it up, and at that point, the building wasn't worth the money that was owed. In the end, they recouped very little. The community was angered by a rich corporation's refusal to pay its obligations. Wilmerite will tell you it lost money over the past decades on Sibley. The project shows the risk involved when government trusts large multi-billion dollar corporations. Now, I said multi-billion dollar corporations so that you know who we're dealing with. You may not have heard of Mace Rich. It's a self-managed real estate investment trust headquartered in Santa Monica, California. Mace Rich is one of the largest owners of regional and community shopping centers in the United States with 95 malls in 19 states. In 2005, the Mace Rich company acquired Wilmerite for approximately $2.3 billion. We have dealt with large corporations like this before in Newport, who want us to trust them on what they say and the reports they give us. I'd like to remind the planning board that they have a right to give a negative declaration on the secret, just like they did on Yugenot Plaza, aka the Walmart project, because of the fiscal situation being unfair to the community. Now, I ask all of you at home and here, do you want to have substantial tax increases over the year because of Wilmerite's not paying taxes while at the same time having an impact on this community that will force the town to provide increased services? Where is the equity in all of this? There is no reason to subsidize a private, for-profit, multi-billion dollar corporation. This project should be helping our community, not hurting it. Wilmerite must pay their fair share.
Thank you, Josh. I ask you, because if someone says something you don't like and you boo, that's unfair to them. So let's try to keep it even keeled. Jerry Benjamin? There you go.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I do so with a certain reluctance, as I know these hearings have been held open by equal specific purposes. Nonetheless, the wide range of public reactions to Park Point that were offered at the last hearing where I was president did not speak suggested to me that I ought to say something as I was named. Sometimes my views are inaccurately described, and I regret to say misrepresent. So my prepared remarks are far too long, three and a half pages, and I'm going to try to respect the five minutes.
Appreciate it.
However, I don't have my reading glasses, and I have these glasses. If I take these off, I can't see you waving. You need to be assertive, Mr. Chair.
We will.
Okay. And eight points, some of which can be dealt with quickly. And most agree, the college is good for the community. I've heard tonight again some assertions that somehow the college is an evil presence. I've been here 45 years, hundreds of my colleagues came here to work here at the college. We've given tens of thousands of volunteer hours in various venues, leadership in community institutions, governmental and non-governmental institutions, and I can go on about that from my personal experience in that of ours. Another measure that I learned from the study we're doing at Kingston right now about their tax policy. Newport has the second highest rents on its main street for commercial properties in Oyster County, and the reason for that is the Business Act and the general [inaudible]. The second point, I made at a previous hearing, the college is not indestructible. We've had our ups and downs over the years. Bad times are bad for the community, good times are good for the community. We're now one of the top public colleges in the country, a comment this evening notwithstanding. And this is the result of hard work over many decades, careful planning, solid execution, delivery of high-quality education at affordable price. People could otherwise not go to college, many first-time [inaudible]. College is a challenge, I detailed it previously. We need to become competitive. If we're not competitive, we will decline. People who said, when I said we might fail, people said that was repugnant, so I shift to decline. Although I can cite numbers of failed institutions. Third point is very important, the college does not lie to the community. Now, these misrepresentations have been made a lot, and the speculations that somehow we're lying. Let me suggest several areas. We know there's pent-up demand for student housing. We provide statistics that we have less student housing than similar institutions across the state. We know student-dedicated apartment housing. Any critics have said they quote "heard" that we were going to grow, or they saw that we were growing. What they heard, I can't determine who they heard it from, but we will not grow our undergraduate population. The reason for that is we don't have the facilities to serve. Even if we build housing, we don't have the education facilities to serve. That's the evidence, that's the constraint. And we want to retain quality. What we have done is reduce built buildings to replace 30- and 40-year-old buildings, and rehab buildings to replace 30- and 40-year-old buildings to increase the quality of education that we can offer, and therefore increase the quality of student housing. Our planning documents are available and on the web for everybody to see. I'm especially pleased, and I was dean once, before people figured out who they were giving responsibility to, and I supervised the science department, which is now reorganized. When I was dean, we had three physics majors. Now we have almost 20 physics majors. That's a measure of quality. Being a physics major is a hard thing to do. You have large numbers of biology majors. You have a new science building, and we're going to serve those things well. That doesn't mean we're growing the student population, that means we're creating the facilities to create, develop the quality of education. Regarding the new residence halls, finance through room fees. We planned, adopted the new residence hall in 2008. We requested bonds in 2011, and they were authorized this year. Those residence halls will largely allow us to reduce, triple in our residence halls. It is not a sign that we're lying about whether we intend to grow. We in fact have a desire to increase our graduate student population, which is largely resident people seeking to improve their professional competitiveness by getting graduate degrees in engineering and businesses. Now, I've seen the misrepresentation of Wilmerite's history as a corporation, and talked to the leaders of making this assertion, and I've demonstrated the history of Wilmerite as a company to others. I'm not prepared to do that tonight, as I don't have the documents with me. But it's not a simple story of the evolution of the company, the sale of some courses of the company, and the reorganization of the company. I will say that Wilmerite is an upstate company seeking to build its business in upstate New York in collaboration with a regional institution and is family-owned, and it's been developed over several generations. We should be proud that New York can create companies like this, even in its very tough business environment. We're trying to attract companies like this to New York. Here we have a New York company that's trying to invest in New York, and we're condemning it for being successful? To me, that's extraordinary and wrong there. I have a fundamental disagreement with people who condemn Wilmerite because they're big. I think that what we have here is an ideological predisposition to the anti-capitalist, anti-profit, and anti-success. Our opponents are making direct or veiled appeals to ideological biases of people in the community. Many in Newport don't like capitalism, they don't like profit, and they don't like business, even though they benefit from all three. People, of course, are vital to their point of view, but community decision-making should not be based, should be based on data and analysis, not on the purposeful and often unsubstantiated use of language designed to mobilize rather than [inaudible]. Now, Wilmerite has been responsive in these processes, plans have been modified, good planning principles, for example, concentration of development in already settled parts of the community rather than sprawl outside in the more rural areas of the community. Plans have been modified, as I've said. And regarding the pilot, I argue, I understand, a very contentious and problematic concern, and I've made some study of this. Now, this is a state policy that gives localities the capacity to make a judgment about what they want to do for economic development. If it's a bad state policy, it would hurt my neighbors to oppose it if it has a state policy. In fact, as I have to reveal myself. But the facts on the ground are what they are. New York State thinks that pilots are needed as a tool to compete with other states for economic activity. Any company that is eligible seeks a pilot. It's just the norm. Lots of local companies have sought and obtained pilots. The process of granting a pilot is consultative and effectively a negotiation. The company asks for something, the community considers it, it provides its point of view, the IDA considers the equities and makes a judgment. Wilmerite is negotiating, and by the way, I've had no conversations with any representatives of Wilmerite about its negotiations on the pilot. Many people of interest have been heard regarding the company's desire for real property tax payments. You have sought additional systematic data that is germane to the question. I admire the board for getting the data. I paid $10,847.61 in property taxes last year. No taxes are paid by the property proposed for development now. Some taxes will be paid when Park Point is built, subject to negotiation. It will surely be a revenue gain to the community. In fact, I think the project will provide a very strong net benefit to our community, including the building of additional water and sewer capacity, which has been suggested. Now, and I say it to the community, not to the college, although the benefits to the college are obvious. There's strong differences, I admire people stating their minds, those will be resolved through the process that we have. A point about data, and forgive me for this, but no serious student of management would say that a manager's projections about an agency's needs are neutral and dispassionate. No serious student would say that, especially a manager who has been losing resources in austere budget environment. Naturally, the manager will seek to use the opportunity to rebuild his or her agency's resource base if it presents itself, and police department has no exception to that principle. Now, one other point about closure, and I don't want to complicate the matter, I have a very strong view on this, as I've studied this over many years. Since the adoption of seeker, New York State's very local land use decision process has been formed and directed by state law, new state law at that time, and it has strengths and shortcomings. Among the shortcomings are the capacity that the law provides for people who oppose change to delay projects for so long that proponents, especially incurring costs, especially opportunity costs, abandon the project. In other words, time is a resource, and what we have here, we're in an exceptional environment, and I'm about to finish, we're in an exceptional environment because money's been so cheap for so long, that the pressures, the fiscal pressures in this moment have been less compelling than in other moments. Projects should be decided on their merits, and I know this board will do that. After thorough consideration of the evidence, you should not be governed by non-decisions resulting from the purposeful delay and advocates for purposeful delay. We need to take, we need to take the decision that we gather the evidence and take decision in a reasonably timely way so the merits are served. Regarding Park Point, it's my view that we've reached the point where we need to decide. I'm very grateful for your public service in our community. I honor it, and I thank you for your moment and for affording me the opportunity to meet this statement.
Thank you, Jerry. Ari, A-R-I, Ari. Oh, there you are, okay.
My name is Art Butler, and I'm a student at Newport, 9th and 17th. Aside from many other concerns I have that I share with everybody else who's spoken, I want to speak from the perspective of a student on the point of interactivity between Park Point and campus and town. The project is being built as a walkable, viable development, and I think this is very important, especially for a town our size, and especially for student housing. However, I don't think this is what it's going to end up being. The school has no data regarding community patterns for students that faculty who live all campus, but if you talk to students who live in the Southside Apartments, which is approximately .7 miles if you measure along the sidewalks to the classroom buildings, many of them drive to campus every day, often making more than one trip. If you talk to students who live north of Main Street near here, measure along the sidewalks, it's about .9 miles. So this seems like a small distance, but still, the reality is many of these students drive to campus, often more than once a day. And if you measure from the center of where this development will be, from that center to the classroom buildings to the same point is .9 miles, .95 miles. So that's longer than any of these distances the students are already driving. So this has, having more of these students driving has both environmental and economic costs. It's also .1, it's 1.6 miles to go from Park Point to downtown Newport. So to mitigate this issue, I think the school needs to take the non-automobile off-road path that was proposed to [inaudible]. to connect from campus to the northwest portion of the project. I think they need to take this very seriously. And I know this is outside of the project's scope, the particular project, but I know there's school administrators here who are listening. And if we're going to continue to market ourselves as a green SUNY, then we need to actually take these projects seriously. And there's no reason we should be housing students far enough away from class and town that they have to drive. So I think we need to make this path that's going to be on campus. We need to make it attractive, we need to make it wide enough to serve both bikes and pedestrians. We need to increase our bike infrastructure on campus, which is bike racks. I mean, we need to redo the standard design of the bike racks we have so that people actually use them, and they're actually safe to lock your bike to. We need to rework the bus schedule. The New Paltz Loop doesn't run on weekends right now, and we need to add a stop, and I know that's in the FDIS, but that needs to be taken seriously. And there is a car share promise, and I think this is an opportunity for the campus to work with Park Point to expand the car share program we have on campus right now and make it a reality at the Park Point as well. So if this is approved, I think SUNY New Paltz should be required to formulate a plan for this path, to rewrite the bike policy, and to begin to rework the bus system as well. I've tried working with the administration on these budgets before and haven't been able to much cooperation, so I just wanted this to be said.
Thank you. Sure.
I just want to clarify as to your point that, yeah, you're right, that that issue is in...
Can you just sit down?
No, okay. Is in the FDIS, but there's no plans to expand the loop bus service on the weekends. Just stating that that is not in there, so there's that. Clarification over.
Okay. Manuel? Dave? Samuel? Yeah.
Hi, my name is Manuel Bahava, I'm a junior, current student at SUNY New Paltz. I'm also president of the Student Association of SUNY New Paltz.
My name's Zach, I'm the executive vice president of the Student Association, and I live on Sakside Avenue.
Yeah, I also live on Church Street. Over the last few weeks, we have been coming up with a statement on Park Point, presented today to the planning board. Thank you again for allowing us, allowing the community to speak on this project. The Student Association has been having internal debates about the benefits and costs of Park Point. They have taken into account all sides, community members, students, initiators, and faculty. We feel that we have come to a comprehensive understanding of Park Point and the implications that will come along with this project. While we still have lasting concerns, the Student Association Executive Board supports the effort to provide increased housing for transferring community students that Park Point would provide. We believe that construction of Park Point would benefit students when it also benefits the surrounding community that we are part of on a daily basis. Therefore, the construction of Park Point should take into account environmental sustainability and to its development, which it does to a degree, town and village overburdening of services, and affordability. We as students are members of this community who want to see a 40-year project this magnitude be of quality in every way possible. Thus, we have organized our demands into three major groups: affordability, sustainability, and economic well-being. Affordability: Students need to know that Park Point will remain loyal to their commitment to be a student-friendly housing complex as well as maintain responsibility and affordability by showing students that they can afford to live in their complex. We demand that Park Point be as diverse as its campus strives to be, especially in terms of students' cost of living. Sustainability: Many village and town officials, students, community activists, are extremely concerned with Park Point's plans to use natural gas. Natural gas is not an environmentally friendly social energy. In order to preserve the local environment, we propose that Park Point implement various levels of renewable energy, such as installing solar panels, biomass heating, and semi-permeable asphalt throughout the project. Economic well-being: We do not support the current pilot proposal, and ask Wilmerite to pay its full and fair share of taxes. We urge Wilmerite to not pass off the cost of students. Students and community members should not foot the bill. We recognize the need for Park Point, but as it currently stands, it does not stay in line with our community standards. In order for us to wholeheartedly support the project, the points that we raise need to be addressed before the project is decided upon.
As well, I would like to add, we hope that SUNY and Wilmerite will include students with relevant majors and minors in the final planning. And as well, this wasn't in our formal statement, but I'm fairly confident the entire Student Association would support what I'm about to say. If our demands are not met, we will have to withdraw our support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Alan Goodman?
I'm Alan Goodman.
You're Alan Goodman? Boy, you look like Kitty, but I thought you... So you write your name down, put your name in twice to get double time?
Well, Alan could not be here tonight, so he asked me to read his statement, which is blessedly short. Dear members of the New Paltz... Oh, my name is Alan Goodman. I don't know how to handle this.
All right, Kitty Brown speaking for Alan.
It's reading from Alan Goodman's letter to you. Wilmerite will forever define and alter the character of our community if it is permitted to build Park Point. Right now, this land is the buffer between the high-density urban SUNY campus and the residential rural landscape around it. The land itself was actively farmed until a few years ago and enjoyed an agricultural tax exemption. The land across the street, on Route 32 South, is still farmland, and a popular local roadside stand still sells fruit cider and baked goods. Park Point will obliterate the rural buffer between the college campus and the residential community around it. If it is built, it will provide the precedent for the farmland across the road to also become housing. I urge you to deny approval to this project based on its inevitable harm to our community character. A case that supports this decision is cited below. And then he has a link to the E.S.C. seeker page, which I'll provide. It's the Village of Chestnut Ridge versus Towne Ramona. I believe I signed up to speak next.
Yes, you do, Kitty. Now, this is Kitty Brown speaking for Kitty Brown.
I'm going to talk really fast. First of all, thank you for serving in what is probably simultaneously the most thankless and important job in our community. You are the body that takes a hard look at the impacts of a proposed project, and anyone who observes your meetings knows that you take this commitment seriously. Although I am a member of the Town Council, these comments are my own. I understand that Supervisor Zimmet will be offering comments on behalf of the town, but I have not had a chance to see if they address my concerns. Like Alan, and his letter did inspire me to investigate community character a little more. The project claims to be consistent with community character, but in fact, it is creating community character and inducing growth in a way that is incompatible with our town's comprehensive, open space, and farmland protection plans. And our farmland protection plan is included in the Ulster County Greenway Compact, can be viewed at ulster.ny.us/agfarm.html. It's a wonderful and important document. The applicant fails to mention that this project was recently farmed. Our existing master plan identifies agriculture as a primary value our community wishes to preserve. The American Farmland Trust identifies agriculture as a critical component of a healthy local economy because it actually subsidizes the residential base that costs farm services and it pays the taxes. And I brought along some citations from the AFT. The AFT also cites the economic, environmental, fiscal, food security and safety, scenic and recreational, pollution prevention, and many other benefits of farmland that are forever lost when it is converted to residential development. These are not calculated in the economic and fiscal impact section of the FDIS, and the cost of adding fossil fuel consumption run off from cars and other vehicles can never be mitigated down to the existing minimal carbon footprint of agricultural land. Our new draft master plan identifies this area as a university growth area, envisioning the kind of businesses that would finally bring the commercial tax base our community needs. When this project was originally submitted as a PUD, the town board requested that the public benefit requirement be provided through some sort of year-round recreational facility, such as a bowling alley. I don't know if this request was the reason that the applicants pulled their application for PUD and returned the application that is now before you. The applicant also fails to mention in the community character section that in addition to agriculture, housing in the immediate neighborhood to the east consists of fee simple townhouses and rentals built by local taxpaying builders that meet the affordable housing needs of faculty and seniors who cannot afford the other housing projects supported by a pilot with the pond. To the north, Ryerwood, Mulberry Square, and the soon-to-be constructed Mifflin Project also represent small-scale residential housing that is in keeping with community character. To the south, the neighborhood tapers into a buffer of single-family homes along the east side, and on the west to velletero apartments, which represents an adaptive reuse housing model favored by our master plan and sustainable development practice. The economic impact statement and the SUNY New Paltz Foundation both refer rightly to the high cost of living in New Paltz. If you look at the amount of tax-exempt commercial property that has been taken off the tax rolls for 20 years by IDA pilots, you can see why. It is crucial that we all remember that this project was not eligible for a pilot when it was originally submitted. So how did this category get added? And why is Wilmerite so sure they would get this special designation that it has been part of their application since day one? I can't answer either question, but I do know that through a series of misunderstandings, New Paltz Town Supervisor Susan Zimmet missed the opportunity to present our objections. However, I recently learned through the efforts of ace investigative reporter Roberto Lo Bianco of the New Paltz Oracle, that every town that did submit comments was opposed to adding this category. And yet, by some miraculous and mysterious formula known only to the IDA, the addition of this category was approved in August of 2012. Even more disturbing, the IDA's new category five defines, defines dormitory housing as housing facilities designed for and occupied by students attending higher education. Please note, not facilities owned by a nonprofit institution of higher education. Oh, where's page three? So that means that every housing developer in the country will be lining up to buy farmland in New Paltz and Ulster County and putting up a sign that says "student housing." I believe that your finding statement must show that the IDA's decision was arbitrary, capricious, poorly defined, clearly ignored the will of its residents and the spirit of home rule in New York State. Therefore, the planning board has no choice but to prepare a statement of findings that finds that the county-wide catastrophic consequences of this change to Ulster County's IDA policy cannot be mitigated. With no pilot, I believe Wilmerite will go away. This presents an exciting opportunity for our community. Speaking for myself, I would like to accept the offer made two weeks ago by Sharon Roddy, chief financial officer of the SUNY New Paltz Foundation, to build this project itself. Yes, the town will lose some modest revenues, but I believe that keeping the projected $6.5 million in revenue will do far more good in our community than if it were to leave town and go to Rochester. Both Wilmerite and Foundation cite the state's primary revenues. So why not keep these revenues close to home? I trust the SUNY Foundation to use these revenues to fulfill its mission to grant more scholarships, reduce class size, pay its agents and faculty stipend. And by keeping that revenue in New Paltz, our local businesses and economy will thrive. Imagine a development designed by SUNY, engineering, sustainable communities, business and sociology departments, students, farmers, and local entrepreneurs. In that way, we'll have a sustainable community we can all be proud of.
Thank you, Kitty.
My name is Catherine Silver. I live on Church Street in Village, New Paltz, and I'm speaking as a taxpayer. And I'm concerned about the idea of luxury student housing as we look at what's happening in this country to the cost of higher education. I think we really want to look at, you know, what's raising up the cost. And it's not what we're paying faculty, it's some of these other costs, like, you know, what it costs to live in campus. I would, I'm opposed to having a pilot. I think any project that is put up by a for-profit company should be well enough designed that it doesn't need to be subsidized by me and by taxpayers. I'm also a little disappointed in the whole concept of Park Point in that they are not putting up affordable housing. When you look at the level of debt SUNY New Paltz graduates are leaving with, that's an issue. We have to see the cost of higher education come down in this country. And putting up some kind of dormitory facility that was really affordable, that kept costs down, would be important. And I think it would, you know, be the sort of thing we want to see from SUNY rather than having luxury housing with lots of parking lots that are going to have more runoff into, you know, the watershed. So I would urge you to not grant the pilot or to not support, you know, Park Point receiving a pilot. And I think that SUNY really should be able to do better by our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Here I am, Ari. Oh, there you are.
She's sitting on the stairs. Hello, everybody. My name is Ariana Vasco. I am on the New Paltz Village Board. I own a home in New Paltz, and I've spoken before and I will try not to repeat myself. I have to say something about the Hudson Valley Patterns for Progress statement and how I feel like they really miss the point. You know, a lot of the campus administrators and students have talked about the need for this housing project. And I think most of us are, a lot of us are not against a project being built, generally speaking, but, you know, we recognize the need for more housing. We recognize the need for more student housing. We recognize the need for SUNY New Paltz to become more competitive by providing this kind of apartment-style housing and providing a residential experience. What we don't want to see is a pilot granted for a for-profit entity. Wilmerite has claimed that this project is not financially viable without a pilot, which might be the case if you're looking at communities like Geneseo or Buffalo, or Binghamton, or places that are not like New Paltz where the campus is directly adjacent to the rest of the community, and places where the rental market prices are significantly lower than in New Paltz. And it makes me question whether or not Wilmerite has the hopes of setting a precedent in New Paltz that they can then apply to other SUNY communities. And where, in which case, the state can continue to push the tax burden onto the local taxpayers statewide. Based on a comment we heard here tonight that they are trying to grow their company in upstate New York, it would appear that this might be true. It seems like it would also go along with Governor Cuomo's plan to run for president and look as though he's reduced state taxes by not building new dorms with the dormitory authority and paying prevailing wages with doing so, and having our local taxpayers subsidize these projects. To charge $775 per bed on average and grow $6.8 million and be asking for a tax abatement when according to the Center for Research, Regional Education, and Outreach, Discussion Brief Number One, Equity in the Property Tax Burden for Citizens in Ulster County, the full value of the tax-exempt property in New Paltz makes up 73.44% of the full value of all property in New Paltz, meaning that the other 20, almost 27%, are the ones paying for these projects and the projects that have pilots. This is the highest percentage in Ulster County, meaning that New Paltz taxpayers are overburdened by the cost of services that are being provided to these nonprofit tax-exempt entities. I have other questions that are not regarding the pilot. One of them is what will the Park Point policies be regarding emergency services? A good example is the Rescue Squad, who has moved to being combined service, meaning they have paid on-staff professionals as well as trained volunteers. And currently... And currently, the village and town boards are discussing the logistics of increasing their funding to have an additional paid staff member. They're often dealing with two calls at once, and when there are more than two calls at once, there are private services such as mobile life support that step in. When an ambulance arrives and a person refuses transport, the community, the taxpayers, eat the cost of that call with no contribution from the individual or that individual's insurance company. Just to quote you some numbers, ambulance services in 2011, total dispatches was 1,950. 234 of those calls were to SUNY. In 2012, there was 1,967 total dispatches, 207 were to SUNY. And in 2013, the numbers through October 21st are 1,803, with 196 being to SUNY. If the trend in nearly 18 calls per month continues, the total SUNY calls for 2013 will be 231. One of the major contributors to the volume of calls from the campus, and I know this because I used to be a resident assistant on campus, is campus policy, and this is a liability thing, I totally understand it, but there's a campus policy where resident assistants are instructed to call UPD, the University Police Department, and subsequently the Rescue Squad when a resident is bothering, regardless of whether or not that resident wants help from the Rescue Squad or is asking to be transported. More often than not, those people who did not ask for an ambulance to be called deny transport. So I think we need to just look at this kind of example when we are studying the cost of emergency services. And so with that knowledge, my question stands, what will Park Point's policy be regarding emergency services? An example of something different is at Woodland Pond, and I'm not necessarily advocating for this, but I think you should be aware, at Woodland Pond, there is 24-hour security and for something like fire alarms, when there is only one alarm going off, one header going off, and there's not multiple headers going off, there is a security guard as the first responder to check things out. I am aware, and I believe this is still true, that Park Point is going to have their own security guards. I saw that that was one of the jobs listed in the employment section. You know, will they be on call, working 24 hours a day? Will they be the first of the first responders, the paid employees by Wilmerite? A separate question I have is regarding the loop bus, and I thank you, Ari, for bringing this up. I have seen students driving from the Southside Apartments literally up the street to park along Southside Avenue across the street from Elting Avenue. I also know students living on North Manhattan who drive to campus regularly and park on the east side of Platte Hill Avenue. And these are, these are things where students are driving. I remember when I was a student, and my roommate would pay the dollar a day to get a little parking pass every single day so we didn't have to walk from Lenape Hall to our classes, which Lenape Hall is closer than where Park Point is going to be. And we also wouldn't drive to town, or wouldn't walk to town, we would be able to drive into the village. So I think that, I find it difficult to believe that students will not be driving from Park Point to their classes or to anywhere else in New Paltz. And regarding this, I do support the idea of the loop bus going there. I'm aware that it would add five minutes to the loop, which I question what that would do to the service and people wanting to use the service, making it convenient or not. But I am the village board liaison to the Transportation Implementation Committee. The committee was instrumental in working with SUNY students and the county to create the loop service, and I'm supportive of this going to Park Point because I think that it will discourage students from driving. However, I was president at this meeting, the Transportation Implementation Committee meeting, where the committee unanimously agreed that Wilmerite should be a financial contributor to the loop bus service. And I know that the chair has communicated this to Wilmerite and SUNY New Paltz. And what I want to know now is has Wilmerite committed to contributing funds to the loop bus as the Transportation Implementation Committee has requested? So those are my comments for tonight. I think everybody knows where I stand on the environmental issues regarding this and how I think it could be greener, but I know that our code doesn't necessarily provide us the teeth for this. So I would only encourage us to not grant, and I know this isn't up to you, it's the SUNY Board of Appeal, but to urge you, if you have any influence over the decision, to not grant the additional parking, the runoff parking, and encourage porous pavement. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Make sure you get out of here. Tommy? I can't read quite fine.
Tammy?
Tammy? Tammy? That was close.
Hi, my name is Tammy Friedman, and I'm a town resident. I also own rental property in the town, and I feel like I'm already overtaxed. And I pay my taxes, and I pay them on time. I want to thank the planning board for having this public hearing for this extremely important issue, and I say it's extremely important because this can cause a great deal of harm to this community. For instance, a recession is usually just a temporary problem, but this can be a permanent problem. And this is a recipe for disaster in this town. As you know, this community has already been stressed by the last recession, and has showed signs of it by the number of foreclosures. That says that the local homeowners unable to pay the minimum expenses to keep up their home and pay their taxes. These are the people in the community that pay for the services. This is the base in a small town. We don't have large corporate jobs or large corporate taxpayers here. We have the small business owner and the small homeowner. Maybe some of you don't live here in New Paltz because the taxes are already high here. We are actually a lot higher than the national average in this small town. What do you think that this will do to an already stressed-out taxpayer? Think about this, because it will affect the college and this project. A college doesn't live in a vacuum, it lives within a good supportive community, and that's how it works. We have been working together for many years, and it's been successful. That has been a good recipe for the SUNY College to get such an outstanding name in the most recent years. We have supported each other and respected each other, and that has worked like a good marriage. When we see a failed marriage, it's because there's no communication nor respect for one another. This can be fixed by opening up the door of communication in most cases. Working as a therapist for many years, I know this to be true, sometimes all it takes is a few meetings, if the intention for the resolution is there. At the last public hearing, I heard David Eaton speak about finding common ground. I think that's a good start to open a conversation with the college and the community to see where we have college ground, common ground. This can work. What doesn't work is being bullied. As the faculty and staff of this college probably understand, bullying is a big problem in our schools across the country. It affects all schools on every level and every age. I believe the faculty and staff are seriously looking into this, into this resolving this enormous problem. This problem must stop at the top in order to stop on the level of the students. If the college is involved in a project that's primary measure to enter the community is through bullying, then the college is also responsible for that tactic. It's hypocritical to advocate a behavior and then do the same behavior to others. I can tell you, as a taxpaying member of this community, I feel bullied. In order to get us back to a place of supporting each other, if you will, keeping the marriage a good one, then we need to talk about the problems and find the common ground. I urge this planning board to continue this conversation and to assign a committee to represent the college and the community to find our common ground and to keep our college and our community healthy, safe, and workable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ari. Claudia? Forrest, that's Claudia. Is he ready? She left? Dirk Dewitt?
My name is Dirk Dewitt. I'm a resident of Gardner, but I'm in the New Paltz School District. Probably a lot of what I have to say has already been said, but I like to say it anyway. And a lot of interesting things have come to light here tonight, particularly what Kitty said. My reason for being here is to give my opinion on the Park Point project. For 28 years, I had a department rental business in New Paltz, in the village. In the village of New Paltz, it was called Paltz Apartments for those 25 or 28 years. During that time, I think I provided good housing for the community and the college. There were times when the business was not good, and there was times when it was easy. During that time, I had roofs to replace, tenants to find, cleaning, painting, water sewer, and other responsibilities that go with owning a business. The other large expense I had were the taxes, school, county, and town. Life would have been very easy if there were no tax obligation. As a matter of fact, it would be easy for all of us if we did not have to pay taxes. My position on Park Point is pretty straightforward. I'm sure the Calhoun Board will do a very good job of stewarding it. I'm in favor of the project. What's good for the college is good for New Paltz and the school system. New housing is always good. Not all students will want to live on campus. Some will want their own apartments down in the village. However, as many other people have said today, I am opposed to the pilot for this project. There is no reason why a for-profit entity should be granted a pilot here. I don't like the idea they're going to make money on my back as well as your backs, especially when they are a multimillion-dollar corporation. All of you here should feel the same way unless you like paying taxes. This is a business opportunity for them without some handout by us. If the project can't stand on its own merit, then go somewhere else or reevaluate their rent structure, charge another $10, $20 a month to pay your taxes. Let me repeat, I'm opposed to the pilot. It is unfair for homeowners and businesses alike to be at a level playing field for the project. I encourage any person here who has a say in the pilot approval process to vote against it. And another thing to consider is, I'm not sure of my fact here, but the New Paltz school system tax law may have an assessment of maybe 500 million, 600 million, 7700 million. If you entered the assessment, that would be on the Park Point project that could lower our taxes or more taxes, more money could be raised for the project and the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. What, yeah? Well, I want to... Charles Rose?
Good evening. My name is Charles Rose. I've been in New Paltz for a long time. My family's been here for over 70 years. First time I've come here to voice my opinion because I think it's overwhelmingly important that each of us get involved in this time of existence. I've spent in New Paltz, SUNY has always been an issue and a question in a lot of people's minds as to whether it contributes fully to our community and...
Talk into the mic.
I have no question that SUNY does contribute to our community. I think in listening to the great arguments presented here, a lot of them I would have covered myself, but to sum up and keep the night short, the key one that I'm focused on is the fact that this large entity, which is a state-funded entity, it's the State University of New Paltz, of New York, excuse me, and it derives its funding from the state, not from a small village or a community. Why it's coming and deciding that it can fund itself out of its own state funds is very interesting. One of the reasons is because there's an overwhelming movement, not only in the state but in the country, to do away with a lot of higher education being funded by the government. Why does SUNY management find itself in a position, which prior to this it hasn't done, of having to go outside its own organization for that funding and to our little village and community of New Paltz, is beyond, I think it's at best, asked the question, and I'll read from the SUNY statement here that raises a big question in my mind. This is their About page, and the way they project themselves is not the way they project themselves here. It says, and I quote, "The magnitude of our potential is breathtaking. The power of SUNY is not confined to one or two dots on the state landscape. We're a cluster of institutions. We are literally all over the map. With 64 unique learning environments for every type of student, every stage of life, and every kind of passion, SUNY is truly a universe of knowledge encompassing every field of human inquiry. Disciplines that range from music to mechanics and perspectives, from the molecular to the microeconomic. Like the global marketplace, SUNY is always on, constantly seeking, generating, analyzing, etc. SUNY's reach and impact is without peer." Now, they're projecting themselves as this institution of great power. Then in their closing statement, they say, "On the pages of our strategic plan, we present our big ideas not as hope, but as firm intentions." Well, that's great. So they are so sure of themselves, they know exactly what they're doing. Yet, I ask the question, why this college hasn't planned prior to this for the one basic part of their whole institution, which is dormitories? How did you get it into your strategic plan all these years without proper amount of dormitories? And now, we, the little people in Village of New Paltz and Town of New Paltz, are being asked to fund in the circuitous way your major organization, which is now linked with a private sector institution, a multi-billion dollar, not million dollar, billion dollar corporation? And then I hear someone from SUNY tonight testify that he likes the free market, basically. He likes capitalism. That's interesting. I didn't see anybody bid on this project. I didn't see the free market at work here. Nowhere have these people bid on this project. Why were they chosen? I don't know. Why is, are the facilities currently under construction in New Paltz on the campus, those 244 beds, being built at a cost of 25 billion, and they're estimating it's only going to be 50 million for the 700 beds? The reason is, they don't have a union environment off-campus. They've changed that rule as well, because if they're building according to government standards, they're supposed to have union participation in this. So they've already addressed that issue, and the cost is significantly less to them. Anyone in the private sector, we have a great person in this room, Mr. George Cipri. Why not let him bid on that project if they really want to build this cheaply? And if you don't need unions, and I think that he and many others in the construction industry would be interested in bidding on this project. There's just too many issues. And I tell this board, there is no excuse for voting for a pilot for this organization and this multi-billion dollar corporation.
Hi, good show. Joanna Weiss?
Hi, I'm Joanna Weiss. I live in New Paltz. I've never spoken at a public meeting before, so I'd be made by stutter or faint. I'm engaged, and I'm getting married this summer on July 4th. My fiance and I are excited to begin our lives in New Paltz. We are excited to buy a house and have kids and send them to school here. We look forward to knowing that they'll be in a great community like this. We've looked at some houses already, and we've toured a couple, and we've done the math on how much it would cost us. We can afford a mortgage, and we can afford utilities, and I'm sure all of you know the taxes here are so high, we worry that we won't be able to afford the taxes. New Paltz taxes are particularly high, and in fact, when I told my parents that, and friends, that we were planning on buying a house here, they laughed at us, and they said that we would never be able to afford the taxes because we're two young people just starting out. The reason I'm telling you this is because I'm concerned that we are taking a town that already does not have affordable housing and raising the cost of living further in order to offer the campus more affordable housing. The irony here is that when the students of SUNY New Paltz graduate, they're not going to be able to continue to contribute to our community because, like me and my fiance, they're not going to be able to afford to live here. So they can live on campus and have affordable housing, but then they graduate and they're out of luck. I don't oppose affordable student housing. I just ask that you consider the cost to current and future New Paltz residents when discussing this project. In order to keep our community affordable, we need to look at how we can lower our taxes, not give tax breaks to companies like Old Man.
Thank you. Bob? Where's Bob Garriello?
I'm still making some notes.
What do you mean you're still making notes?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
So they can live on campus and have affordable housing, but then they graduate and they're out of luck. I don't oppose affordable student housing. I just ask that you consider the cost to current and future New Paltz residents when discussing this project. In order to keep our community affordable, we need to look at how we can lower our taxes, not give tax breaks to companies like Oldman.
Thank you. Where's Bob Gabrielli?
I'm still making some notes.
What do you mean you're still making notes?
I'm sorry.
Does anybody else want to?
Yes.
Could you give me your name and?
Hello, everyone. My name is George Seifert. My brother and I are the owners of Sea Kill Builders in town. We have lived and worked in our community for over thirty-five years. I am here tonight to make three points. Number one, a few years ago, I approached SUNY New Paltz to discuss the apartment complex we were about to build. This project is known as the Ridge at New Paltz and consists of seven buildings, seventy-four units, which also could equate to 300 beds. It is located directly across the street from the college and adjacent to one of their major parking lots. Our meeting was for me to offer the college the opportunity for housing for professors, staff, and students, and to see if they wanted me to dedicate a number of units to that use. While I thought the meeting went well, coupled with the fact that they are in need of housing, I was very surprised that they did not jump at the opportunity nor get back to me. Number two, Sea Kill owns two large apartment complexes, our office building in the Village of New Paltz. This consists of fifteen buildings, 132 units, and could equate to 528 beds. We pay our full share of taxes. We would never think to ask our community to pay a share of our taxes in order for us to make a larger profit. This leads me to the third and final point. We are asking the planning board that should you grant an approval to Wilmerite, that it be granted with the condition that Wilmerite will pay their full share of taxes in exactly the same manner that every resident and business owner pays in our community. Thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you much. Hey, finish it, Bob?
We look so much alike, I'm the handsome one.
State your name and location for the.
George Seifert. No, I'm Bob Gabrielli. I live on Doug Road in New Paltz. And, you know, I put all my notes on my iPhone. You know, Will Rogers once said, "Never talk slow to a fast thinker or fast to a slow thinker." I knew, never knew how appropriate that was until I got a smartphone. Think about it. I want to mimic first what John Johnson said, that you people can, as you know, you can give conditional approval based on no diminution of taxes. And I'm asking you to do that. And we've heard it a million times, there's a commonality of everyone in the community that everyone should pay their fair share. I've heard that some comments, the spokesman from Patterns for Progress said if there were no Wilmerite, the college wouldn't build anything for ten or twenty years. I don't know, as you can see, my hearing is not the best, something to that effect. Yet they're building a 226-unit apartment dormitory. To the vacancy factor, I do believe that perhaps you might consider that your work has been flawed, your reports have been flawed, not your work, but people. I'm sitting up there, I forgot about George, I was going to say 750, there's probably, there are probably good landlords that represent almost a thousand beds in this house. Not one of them has been asked about their vacancy factor. Not one of your consultants or Wilmerite's consultants has said, "What is your vacancy factor now?" That's a serious flaw. I don't think we've got a good study on vacancy factors. This, however, I will tell you from what I know, that this will represent an oversaturation of the market. I see no plan staging other than what they have, two stages. I don't think it has to have some sort of connectivity with the vacancy factor, which hasn't been demonstrated. And I have a third item I want to bring up, which I want to do in the most delicate of manners. You know, courts, judges, you people, you make your decision, and your decision is yours alone to make, you're the final arbiter. The only thing that really can be addressed is the process. Has your process been done correctly? Have you gotten all the relative information? Has information been denied you, that sort of thing? As a town resident and a guy who's kind of invested in this community, I really want to see the process not flawed. I was very, very concerned about a number of things. Number one is, someone had shown me an email purportedly, and I say purportedly because I don't know this, but I want to bring it up as a serious question, from someone at the college, addressed, it may have been a blanket email to all the students saying, "Come out and demonstrate for Wilmerite," et cetera, et cetera. There's a real couple of concerns I have. What's this? Could it have been an improper use of state resources, state university resources, designed to basically lobby? Lobbying is when people approach a board and ask them to take a particular position. I think that there's some public officer laws that go in here, there's some real questions, and I don't want to have someone come back and say, "You know, you guys were improperly, that your process was infected, and this was a flawed process, and we have to go all back and do it again." And I have a real concern. I don't have a judgment. But here's what I do know. I do know it requires a legal opinion. And I think you should really consider getting a good legal opinion from the Attorney General, who will give opinions, as you know, they have opinions of the Attorney General all the time. You can't request it, I can't request it, however, the town board can request it. And what I'd like you to do is, is consider, please, postponing your deliberations and your final judgment on the FEIS until you ask the town board if they are going to consider getting legal opinion on the process. The second part of the process is as follows. I'm very concerned about the ownership problems that have gone on here. We've got a non-state entity that's going to build something for the benefit of the state, and they're obviating, this is a defeasance, what lawyer folks like to call a defeasance. I see Mr. Lithgow is even smiling down. But it defeats the real purpose. And the purpose is, if the college is going to have a benefit, and they're going to have a dormitory, then they ought to conform to their standards, which is, like Adriana said, two great words. This is a public works project. It should be, it should be unionized or it should be bid. If it's not going to, you know, it can be a bid process. We've circumvented bids, we've circumvented public works, now we're circumventing the taxes. And I think this requires an Attorney General's opinion as to the propriety of this mechanism. I think that's the second thing. There's a third thing. I'm very, very distressed to find that Mr. Seifert, Sea Kill Builders, went to the college and said, "Let me do something for you," and they dropped him dead. And lo and behold, we got an out-of-town, they romanced an out-of-town concern to come in and do exactly what a local guy who has silently paid his fair share of the taxes all along wanted to do for them. And that's a real concern. I think you need a legal opinion on that from the Attorney General. And I really think that these are serious questions and should be addressed as part of your deliberative process. And so I hope you'll take those into consideration, and I hope that you would give, I hope that you would give 45 days for me to put my concerns in writing. As you can see, I was so distressed trying to make these notes when my battery came up. But I would like to ask the town board to address these concerns and let them make a decision if they want to seek the Attorney General's judgment.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here who wish to speak? Let's go, give me up to the microphone, name and location. Will you, and then you?
Sure. Hi, my name is Joan House Wilson, and I'm a town resident. I'm also a member of the Environmental Conservation Board of the town, and I'm going to speak a little bit about the ENCV and then make comments as just a citizen. So quickly, the ENCV has submitted comments on the draft, EIS, and the DEIS and FEIS, and we will be submitting another letter soon penned by Norman Turner, and it may or may not be also submitted to the New Paltz Times. But we have been actively engaged in this process. We've had a lot of thoughts on a lot of different issues, from runoff to bernal pools to buffer But I feel like as an ENCV member and as a citizen, that one of the most important things to do is kind of have a little bit of a macro view on this. And the whole, the document itself is called an environmental impact statement, and it's because there will be an environmental impact. That's why it's called that. There will be, it is inherent in this project. And I'd like to say, okay, so there's going to be an environmental impact, so what do we get out of it? Well, first and foremost, I'd like to point out that the project that we're getting is poorly designed and will be poorly constructed. It is not a mixed-use, new urbanist vision that will benefit our community. It is a segregated suburban pod of poorly-built condos that will inherently be dependent upon automobile traffic, student debt, and fossil fuels. It is not a walkable community, it is not a green building, it will not benefit our community, it will not generate energy, it will not feed people, it will not create community, and it will not improve our lives. But what do we know? The project is going to be constructed on a green site, a completely undeveloped green site that was formerly in agricultural use. It will destroy more of our dwindling agricultural land. We've lost more than half of all of our agricultural land in this community in the last fifty years. We're down from 12,000 acres to 6,000 acres. Now, the reason we know this is because we actually paid people to tell us this, consultants. And we drafted a plan that was supposed to be designed to protect our agricultural land. This is agricultural land, and I know people will say it's a poison ivy-infested, you know, soil-contaminated, contaminated piece of agricultural land, but it is a green space, and it is an ecosystem, and it was a farm. So what do we know about the impacts beyond that? There's going to be a whole series of negative impacts. It will destroy agricultural land, it'll increase the amount of impervious surfaces in our town, it will negatively impact the quality of water in our streams, it will displace and kill thousands of plants and animals, it'll produce thousands of pounds, or may I even say tons, of CO2 and methane emissions, it will consume natural materials unsustainably, it'll create light pollution, it'll create noise pollution, it'll create pollution pollution, it'll compact soil and kill soil, and it will increase traffic in our community, despite what they might say. Now, this is in the document, but it's not in the document, because one of the problems with an environmental impact statement is that it's penned by the people who are impacting the environment. So it's not an unbiased document, and I don't believe that the document that was submitted first and foremost was a well-constructed document, well-researched document, or a well-worded document. And I spent a lot of time poring through it. And the document we have is better, and I would like to say that it's an improvement, sure. But what it's hiding is the fact that there will be negative impacts on our environment, and it attempts to gloss over those impacts whenever possible. Now, I know that this is not a deal-breaker, but I want us to have a conscious dialogue about what this means. Our impact, our community and the ecology of our community will be negatively impacted for this project. Will we be benefited by this project? I don't think it's enough of a benefit to outweigh the environmental impacts. Obviously, that's not a deal-breaker for the project, that's why we're talking about the pilot. But I think it's important to talk about. So why is this happening? Because we as a community do not democratically control the land or resources or decision-making in regards to what is built in our community. We do in some ways, but we don't. The planning board's a great woolwork in some ways. But it's also because our zoning codes, our master plans, and our building codes do not represent the future of what we need to build as humans. If we are to build sustainable communities, if we're to build communities that create community, and if we're to build communities that nourish life, this project does none of those things. It's a bad project, done for bad reasons, done for profit by people who don't care about our community. Whatever we can do as community members to spread the word that this project is going to have negative environmental impacts and negatively affect our tax base and negatively affect our community, I support you in doing it, and I hope the planning board will take into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a sophomore at SUNY New Paltz. So it has been a year since I've stood in the same spot with some similar concerns over the EIS. One year ago, I started my first semester at SUNY New Paltz, and immediately I found my passion in the field of sustainability and environmental issues. Since then, I have worked with students, faculty, community members, and administration on various issues relating to sustainability initiatives. So as you probably get the hint, that what I'm concerned most with is the environmental impact of the project for the future of this community. Now, I may just be a student, and I may be gone in a couple of years, but that, but this has become my new home, and it will be the future home of thousands more. To disregard the present voices in this room and the repeated requests and demands the current students and community members is not only undemocratic but pointless and a waste of time. We should value the fact that students are here tonight and care as much as they do in the future of the community, as temporary it may be for them. One other point that Zach, the executive or the vice president of the Student Association, made before, is the inclusion of students in the development of this project. Now more than ever, do students need to become more involved in creating sustainable communities, from the planning to the actual building of projects like these? After all, we are the leaders of future generations. I see that this proposed project is as a great opportunity for applied learning and for creating more environmentally conscious people to live in this fast-changing world. There are going to be more jobs needed in this field in the years to come, and as our world becomes more scarce of the resources we have exploited and used up over the years. I couldn't agree more with everything that John just said before. I clearly understand why so many people are here tonight to voice their concerns and to sustain this community for the next generations of families and students to come. And I'll repeat myself, I may just be a student, and I may be gone soon, but I represent the voice you're going to hear much more of in future years, and I don't want to say we told you so. Build the right, Wilmerite.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comment?
Hi, my name is Chelsea. I'm a student at SUNY New Paltz, and I live on North Chesnut. I decided to come here to speak today because I heard about this development, so I decided to come to the last meeting, and I went on the website, and I've been doing research. And I find some things about this to be kind of disturbing to me. First of all, I don't think it's the right idea to fuel this place on natural gas and coal. As it says on the EPA DACA, natural gas can release methane while it's through leaks and through losses during transportation, and that's not taking into account cracks in casings, which can then leak into water supplies, and as it also says on the website, destroy natural habitats for animals and plant plants. I don't think this is a sustainable project. As I looked at the section about green infrastructure, it really only talked about avoiding wetlands, but there are a lot of other things that we could be doing, such as semi-permeable pavement, rainwater collection, we could be looking into strategic designs to heat and cool the building and solar panels. I don't think it's the right idea to go through with this without considering these things and, you know, taking necessary actions for the future, because there are ever-increasing amounts of greenhouse gases being released into the atmosphere, and the effects of that are getting increasingly intensified. So creating a project that's not really taking this into account is irresponsible, in my opinion. And we're also ignoring. And we're also ignoring the fact that we have the school full of students who are willing to help work with this.
Thank you. One last time.
Joan Bender? Okay. Hi, my name is Joan Bender. I agree with a lot of the comments that have been said.
Joan, where do you live?
I live in, I'm here in New Paltz. I spoke at one of the community board meetings in the past, and I had received an email from the university after requesting to meet with the president about some academic issues, denied my request to meet with him because they claimed they had heard me speak at the meeting. I'm speaking, it may sound like I'm off-topic, but I am speaking on topic in that they treat students in a certain way, and they do business in a certain way, where they think about their needs, and they do not think about keeping promises. Why was made promises that I would be trained in the music therapy program by licensed people? I would make promises on their website that I could register for lessons, and those promises were not kept for a lot of the time. For one year, I did an internship where onsite there was no licensed professor, licensed person onsite supervising me. I was facing expulsion and suspension, either one of either or both, after I spoke at the last meeting and after I received the email complaining about my speaking at this meeting. I had a hearing with Robin Cohen-Laval, and I was not allowed an attorney. I was brought up on charges of not following a professor's verbal command. I had been told by my piano professor to wait in his office, and I followed his directive. I did wait there for a long time in his office, but since my mother has OCD, obsessive-compulsive disorder, and she has it very bad, I had routinely grown up waiting for my mother many, many, many times, for hours sometimes, to like leave a grocery store or to leave her house. And when my professor told me to wait in his office, and he came back, and he again said that I could wait there, and he had done this in the past, I followed his command. And I was brought up on charges where I could be suspended and expelled. And I was furnished an anonymous note at my hearing, not signed by my professor, where it depicted me as a crazy person. I was issued a no-contact order and told that I could not talk with my professor or even wave or have any non-verbal contact with him. And after this no-contact order was issued, my professor waved at me in the parking lot, hello. And I complained to Robin Cohen-Laval about why did he wave at me? Does he even know there's a no-contact order? After, I had difficulty graduating with my thesis. I had a 215-page thesis, very thorough. I could, it was like a doctoral-level thesis. And I was told at my committee presentation that they didn't like my title, and...
It's five minutes.
It's five minutes, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I was basically told they didn't like the title, and I had to stay another semester. Anyway, my point would be, these people, when they don't get their way, they're very underhanded, in my opinion. And I, you know, I feel grateful that I graduated, and I'm not saying that there aren't good things about the school, but I do, I think they want a piece of the pie financially, and they're not willing to share the cost that they should share. That's the ultimate thing. And with students, I know many students who are not kept promises. They don't keep their promises with students like they should. And thank you for letting me speak. And I'm sorry if it sounds off-track, but being that I spoke at the meeting, and then after I spoke at the meeting, I was facing expulsion, suspension, I feel like it is pertinent. And I had an email I could forward to you where they were not happy I spoke at the meeting. And they made it very difficult, my life very, very difficult. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to... Well, I have to give credit to the town council members first.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Sure, let me... Yeah, go ahead. Each before beauty, I know. Thank you.
I'll go. I'm Jeff Logan, New Paltz, New York. Fourth generation here. And I guess I'll just start by saying I'm very pleased to see so many people out here. I want to thank Mike and the whole board here. Only just, a big portion of this board, we've been discussing this for over three years now, kicking around. I've seen Susan in earlier meetings on this too before she was elected. So I'm glad to see our supervisor still here speaking on this. Just so people don't think also, SUNY New Paltz is very close to my family also. My grandmother attended coursework there when it was a normal school. My parents both attended this school, both graduated and later became married and began children, being one of them. My brother attended SUNY New Paltz as a graduate. My wife attended SUNY New Paltz as a graduate. And we now have our oldest daughter attending SUNY New Paltz, and she's in her senior year. I grew up next to the campus, two blocks from it. I grew up playing in those very fields and playing in ice skating on those very ponds. And also, many of the properties on the campus that we used to play on now are inhabited by buildings and structures. This will now be another growth of the campus. I am not opposed to the growth of the campus or for them housing their students on this campus. Several years back, when we were working on a master plan that unfortunately still have not completed, this was indicated as a growth area in our community, and that was by community members. The whole corridor going out 32, I heard some mention also of the South Butt, is also seen as a growth corridor for our community. So this is a part of our community we have looked for, for growth. Amongst other notes, I think this one thing, and there was some mention to it already, and I think this one part of, the piece that is important though is... We are, when I say we, I am part of the town council that is elected in this community. And as elected officials, one of the very important things we do is meet people to boards and commissions. I appreciate tremendously the hard work it takes to work on a planning board. I respect completely the work of the ENCB and the work they put in preparing the comments and reviewing the balance of pages of documents. The real shape of a community is decided by its planning board. And the weight of it, at times, is very, very heavy. And the weight of this one is very heavy. One thing that was, as I did, I got the email that was mentioned. I had, it got forwarded to me. And I will quote, this is from Shelley A. Wright, Chief of Staff and Associate Vice President, for Communication, Office of the President. And this is to quote the email. "The college would like to have a strong showing of supporters at each of the public hearings. There is no exception, expectation that you speak, but we believe that a healthy crowd of supporters at Town Hall will signal that the project continues to have strong college slash community support. We anticipate that many of the established opponents may show up and repeat their concerns. However, many of these concerns have been addressed in the FEIS. The Ulster County Industrial Development Agency, or IDA, will take up the pilot, paying it in lieu of taxes. Application by Wilmerite wants the CEQA process is complete. This is not the jurisdiction of the planning board or the town board. College representative will be prepared to debunk any missed or misinformation that arise during hearings." And there's some contact information. So I guess the reason I bring this to the attention is the problem I'm having is, directionally, no, it is not the jurisdiction of the planning board or the elected town board for the pilot. But it absolutely is what we present, what we use in front of the IDA to decide if a pilot is viable. So it's within the FEIS that you need to go through and own each and every single page of that document. If you feel there's any errors, omissions, or misrepresentations, as a planning board, it is your duty to go through and initial each and every page because that is your document. The document was prepared by the applicant, as is done under CEQA. And now that is your document. Do you feel there are any omissions or errors that when presented to the IDA or a pilot that it would possibly be granted? It has been mentioned here too that the pilot that is being potentially looked at did not exist a mere year ago. We are the only part of Ulster County that has a four-year institution that includes housing. The other one will, obviously, there's a two-year institution owned by the state, and that's over in Stone Creek Marble Town. And they may be facing this same very issue. The project is projected to cost about $50 million. It would have potential tax of about $1.5, $1.6 million. Are we prepared, as a community, to then pay these taxes for this development? I do believe it's a great part of development of this property. This is a good development for the property. It's a great development for the university. But at what cost do we want it as a community? I personally cannot afford at a cost of losing potentially $1.5 million a year. I think the best thing said was why a student was here, that she is a resident here now. She may not be in a few years, but thousands more will be. Is this one of the great omissions, maybe, that's in the FEIS? Is who will be staying here in this community? Are we looking for them to pay part of the school taxes for those students that are 18, 19-years-old attending class? Are we looking for the ones that will be attending class there, graduating, and then staying here? And will they then sustaining that very burden that you and I are facing tonight? So again, I do agree that this is a project, that is a good project. I do not agree, though, that we are not part of the pilot. We are a very integral part of it. And it's by what we are willing to send up to the county for them to review. Thank you and appreciate all your time.
Thanks, Jeff.
I do like you going first.
I know.
My name is Leonard Loza. I live in the village of New Paltz. Hopefully, it is the prerogative in the decision of this planning board after scrutinizing the FEIS, the people's comments, to make a plan and present what they believe is either right or wrong with the FEIS. And hopefully, if you give an approval, it will be conditional that they pay their full share of taxes like all the rest of us in this room. Thank you.
Hang on, Leonard. Somebody else was, yes?
Hi, I'm Dan Under. I live at the 55 Main Street. It's finals time right now. I said I really have things to prepare, but I'd like to say a few things first. You know, I really feel like this project is not sustainable for the future. The infrastructure itself is too far away. I don't know if you guys are all down Manheim. It's pretty far off to get into town. If we want to build something, we should be using local builders, and it should be in the town. Same thing, about 10 years ago, there was a building boom. And then look what happened. People couldn't buy homes. And the same thing possibly could happen again. These things are overpriced. And, you know, in the town, you could buy, you could get an apartment for $400, $700. That's a lot of money. I personally cannot afford that, and many people can as well. Next thing I would like to say is that, I guess, I hope you guys remember like who your voting base is. And the same people that go to Town Hall meetings are the same people that vote. And more importantly, just keep that in mind because we are the final say.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak tonight at the public hearing? It's one of those things you ask three times, I guess, and if no one says anything, then you can close it out. Okay, folks, the board will deliberate. We'll close the public hearing for tonight. We'll then discuss going forward on continuation on it. So since there's no public hearing, we can move to have a discussion on...
Do we have to, do we have to vote, though, to determine whether we're closing public hearing?
We have to determine what our next step is on the public hearing.
Okay, are we doing that now?
We're going to discuss that now, yeah. So...
So do we make a motion to close tonight's public hearing? Is that what you're asking right now?
Well, motion to whether we want to close, close the public hearing, per se, continue it, or close it. Obviously, for each one of the, if we do close it, there is a time period for written comments, which we can determine what time period we will allow for written comments on it and go from there. So...
So what?
I just have one question. Did you say there was new information that was available tonight?
No.
Oh, you didn't, okay.
I said there was new information in the FEIS that wasn't available when you first came to the DEIS.
But what we have to determine right now as a planning board is whether we want to close public hearing or whether we believe keeping public hearing open will help us gather additional information that we can incorporate into our finding statement. Right? That's what we're going to discuss right now.
Or whether we need additional time? Whether we need public comment or we need additional time based on tonight's hearing? Is that part of the segment?
Well, one of the things, you know, we have transcripts being prepared for the last meeting and this meeting. We'll have to review that. Have to respond in kind to that if we find something in there that needs, requires response to in developing our finding statement. So that, that's our ongoing work. That has nothing to do with public hearing, per se. But when we capture all that, review that, determine whether there's something else that we need to determine that was raised at the public hearing that we, that we hadn't addressed, then we can address it in the finding statement. That was the plan, the plan that we're going forward with it. The question on the table is, do we close the public hearing now? Allow for 10, 15 days, business days of written comments, to get in? I want to point out, one of the things we were trying to address in this is to address any of the issues that were raised, not the issues that were raised, per se, but the new material that did come in, in the FEIS that wasn't available in the DEIS. Specifically, we talked about the soils, the pesticide impacts, and the eation. That wasn't available when everybody was reviewing the DEIS. We also had new information on the groundwater, the wells tests, proposed waters applied. And finally, Section K, the community services impact, where we came up with a determination of the cost of what community, what the cost of community services. Basically, a lot of what came out of CDR report and our own discussions on that. So we were really looking, that was new information. That's what I'm getting at, Josh. That was a new information that was not available when they first referred to the draft environmental impact statement. So we were looking for comments and inputs in that area on it. And so that was the purpose of this public hearing, these two days of public hearings on this. And the question is, do we receive some information on that? Do we expect that we will receive any additional information on that that will help us in a finding statement?
I guess I'm wondering if, if there's an advantage to keeping public hearing open. For instance, tonight, I learned things that, maybe I missed it. It had been discussed earlier. But the gentleman who's speaking about the elevation of where the sewage treatment plant plant is proposed to be built, and with the threat of storms becoming larger and the risk of having a sewage treatment plant of a certain size at that elevation, would it be more optimal if it was in a different spot? I mean, maybe Dave can speak to that a little bit, but that kind of felt like new information for me, and I'm wondering, by keeping public hearing open, will there be additional concerns that have yet to be brought up?
So two things. One is, if something new has come off that issue, for instance, that we will discuss and address.
Well, I guess it's two-pronged. That's without a doubt a topic that we need to look at further, but I'm just also citing that as an example of something that seems incredibly important. And what if there's another incredibly important topic that's brought up by a member of the public at a subsequent public hearing? And that's why I'd be, I want to know what our board feels about the advantages or disadvantages for closing public hearing tonight.
Let's go around the table.
Or maybe Dave can comment on the height, the elevation of the sewage treatment plant first.
I can just say that there's a process that you go through with the DEC to qualify a stream to be able to discharge into. That process has gone through the DEC. The DEC has approved this site. You'd need to be uphill of your discharge point. This is not at all unusual to have a sewage treatment plant at this location.
But it seems like one of the advantages, or one of the potential advantages of this sewage treatment plant is this optionality, that the town could potentially use this sewage treatment plant to promote growth on the South Putt Corners corridor. And it seems like some folks in our community are saying that that is something that we would look at as a community as an asset. So maybe that is not an asset if a sewage treatment plant of this size, you know, if you expand it significantly, is there then additional risk? You know, I don't feel like we've had comments from the DEC in terms of, you know, where the tipping points are, in terms of how large a sewage treatment plant is at respective elevations.
We have had comments from the DEC. This plant is sized to accept another 200,000 gallons of sewage. This project will contribute about 50,000 gallons, so there's another 200,000 for growth. The DEC has qualified that 250,000 for a discharge into the stream that is being discharged.
But I'm very familiar with our discussions about the additional capacity, but I don't remember at all any discussion about the capacity relative to the elevation of where this sewage treatment plant would be positioned and where the Walkill River is. And then the homes and properties in between those two points.
That's something that the DEC does look at. There is not an issue with the elevation of this plant, I can tell you that.
I feel like the gentleman who was speaking, he's still here actually in the back. I mean, it seemed like he was bringing up some concerns that I don't feel like we've discussed thoroughly in the past. And I'm just wondering if this is something that we need to dig deeper on.
I have some good notes on that, those issues that were brought up by Mr. Ellis, I believe it was. We can discuss that. I, many of those are site plan issues.
Just seems you're going to get the highest point, and you're going to put this down from there before that elevation.
All right, we're not getting in a dialogue on it.
Yeah, I understand this is a site plan issue, but my point is, it's again, it's two-pronged. This is something that we need to dig deeper on, and it is also an example of a topic that was brought up by the public. So that we're, that we will dig deeper on. So I'm wondering, and I want to get feedback from my colleagues on the board, is there some merit to keeping public hearing open to get additional concerns like this that may have some weightiness to them that we should really be digging deeper on?
Eileen? Yeah, I'm not sure that my concern necessarily is the sewer treatment plant, Tim, but I missed the meeting that we, I think there was an exchange from Peter regarding the soils. And I had some comments that I emailed that came in late, and I, for whatever reason, I think, Dave, you may or may not have received them, but for some reason, I have a corrupted file, and I've tried to send it a couple of times. But I'm not satisfied with the soils at this point.
Oh, even, yeah, discuss that.
And I'm not sure that the ENCB, it seemed to indicate they want to make additional comments. I'm not sure on what, because we have received a number of letters from them. But I'm inclined to keep it open for, you know, we're at holiday season right now, so we were in this position, I think, last year as well. It's a weird time to close it and expect people to make comments, but it's also a weird time to just say we're done and then move on. I'm in that throes of, it's a strange time of year to get things done and not get things done. But I'm not satisfied with the soils section at this point, because I'm just not sure, you know, if my comments have been addressed. And they related to some of the things that Peter sent and some new information that I happened to be received, so.
Well, again, those two issues are the issues that we're going to discuss going forward as far as the finding statement. Tom?
Well, I'm, I believe we should keep the public hearing open. Couple of things came up tonight, the town's position on the project, as well as the school district's position on the project. That was not really included in our previous work, and I think the public deserves time to digest it and go over it. Another issue I had tonight is, and this is a personal, some personal confusion, is I've heard the project referred to as luxury student housing and affordable student housing, and I need to figure out what is what we are working on.
I neither.
I'm really undecided about it. We've heard some new things tonight, though, that I find very interesting. I wasn't completely satisfied with the consultant's economic impact on community services critique and the fact that we are missing information, which I don't know if it can be gotten or is available, on things like tax impacts. I would like to see the downstream actual figures for the effect of the pilot on the assessment of properties for school taxes and be able to understand them better. I don't know how it affects also a potential shift in the people living in existing housing that will be opened up by people moving into the Park Point things. Will we end up with more children in school? Will we end up with a different demographic that would have also different effects on community services? That, you know, I had asked questions about that, and the consultant didn't really answer them to my satisfaction, but I don't know how to get those figures either. Perhaps a little extra time for other people to come up with some real data might help. So extending it could be a good thing.
Peter?
Yeah, okay. I also heard some new things coming up today. In addition to the things that were already mentioned, there were some legal points that were mentioned. I don't know what the merit of those points is, whether they should be considered, but there was new information that we hadn't talked about before. And because of that, I would like to see the meeting kept open, because as long as we keep getting new information, we might as well keep it open.
Well, I get feeling, a strong feeling, I have six members of the board who want to keep it open. And we'll try to get the board to focus in on the final environmental impact statement. It is a planning board document. It is our document. It is what we're saying. It's our words. It's not the applicant's words. It's not anybody else's words. It's our words of how this project goes forward from an environmental impact. Be cognizant of what's in it. We've tried to review it, tried to agree to what's in it. To the extent that we think we have to address better in the soils area, address more clarification in the water and sewer section on it, address more clarification on maybe the fiscal impact on it. It's our document. People aren't, this isn't a Wilmerite document, this is our document. Except we keep the hearing open for another week is fine with me, but realize that we're trying to get information on those areas that we just talked about. Soils, treatment, fiscal, things that are pertinent, things that are factual, things that you could use in a finding statement. At this stage of the game, we've answered everything else in the document that was raised up in the draft environmental impact statement. We will get questions and comments on the pilot. We can discuss our role with the IDA. I want to talk about that also at our meeting on it. But we'll go along with, we have a meeting on the 16th, next Monday night. We'll keep the public hearing open. Washington asked for a motion to keep the public hearing open to December 16th, and next meeting. Anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I go, Eileen, is someone going to second it?
Second.
Any further discussion on it? We'll keep the meeting, public hearing open on, for December 16th on it. Again, I will try to focus you on the areas addressed in Section A, Section E, and Section K of the fiscal, of the FEIS, the final environmental impact statement. Those are the areas that we're looking for factual information, that's something that's not complete, or something that initially that's raised on it. Those are the areas that we should be addressing in this.
So, Michael, then, if we're receiving, just to be more direct about this, if we're going to get additional information from the ENCB, is it required to be in by the 16th, or does it need, is there...
We will set a date for written comments when we close the public hearing.
Okay.
We take written comments while the public hearing's open at any time. But if we close it on the 16th, we'll set a date for written comments to be in subsequent to that.
And then at the next public hearing, might it be appropriate, George, for you to address some of the questions, whether they're appropriate or not for you to address them? Would that be a time for you to address them as well?
I think, or maybe think your first night of both day of high 10, address and put some context.
Okay, so then we would hear that possibly next meeting?
Yes.
Great. I think that's good.
Okay.
So do we have, we have to wait to close the public hearing before we start discussing what we want to include in a finding statement as a planning board?
Yes, generally, well, generally, you're waiting for, to close the public hearing, you're, you wait to get...
All the comments.
Written comments to review that. Then in that process on it, you create the finding statement. Now, a finding statement is a summation. I'll let George do the talking on what a finding statement would be.
Well, generally, it's taking the evidence that has been accumulated in the entire impact statement, which includes the public hearing comments, and the conclusions that are reaching the FEIS, and making determinations with respect to impacts, potential mitigation of those impacts, and essentially stating your findings with respect to those issues. What does the record disclose, what are the impacts, what are the opportunities for mitigation, and which mitigation measures should be incorporated to the final statement with appropriate conditions?
Okay, so then next, so next meeting, we'll have some additional feedback from our professionals. We'll have another hearing. We'll make a decision whether we're closing the public. We'll have something stated, be an additional, whether we're going to have additional time for written statements.
Yes, we definitely will be.
Then after that written, those written statements come in, the board will again evaluate those and finish our...
They become part of your reference.
Great. And then...
Relevant to a determination.
To the determination.
You will reference.
Okay. Okay, so we're a few meetings away from our statement, so to speak.
Oh, yeah. Definitely, the statement is still in, is still going together.
Right, it's still, okay, I'm just trying to, I want to make this sequential for myself, but also I think it's important for the public to know, you know, how it paints out as well.
When do we get the write-up from the stenographer?
Miss Mike, generally, it depends on how busy, I would expect, probably about, it's about, what, two weeks after about a meeting, is it, give or take?
Two weeks after each meeting?
Yeah.
So that means within the next week or so, we'll get the write-up from the 11:25 meeting?
Yeah.
She's nodding in the affirmative. That's how we do it.
You can't type that down.
Yeah, exactly. Stenographer's nodding in the affirmative. Okay, gotcha.
Okay, so that's where we're at. There's nothing else presently on the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Can I make a motion to close tonight's meeting now?
You certainly may. I'll second it. All in favor?
Michael, thank you for conducting the meeting, again, as usual.
We got, we'll have a public hearing...
So we're meeting again next week, okay? This was the interim one, so...
So we got, we got a public hearing next week on learning to lots of the...
I'm not sure I don't have another planning board. Is this our regular meeting?
This is our regular.
This is our regular. I may not be able to be here.
You told me that.
I don't, I just don't know. They may, it often gets canceled, but it's still up in the air right now.